Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council and Financing Authority Meeting of March 11, 2021 to order. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Garner, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you. Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for those listening in, I apologize my audio sounds different. I'm using a different audio because we're having some technical difficulties. So please bear with us here as we do this on Zoom. So City Clerk, if you could, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Holstich.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few presentations. So the first one is an International Women's Month proclamation that the women on the city council, the female majority, is going to read for us tonight. So go ahead and we'll begin.
Need to unmute myself first. Whereas women have played and continue to play an extraordinary role in the history of Palm Springs and throughout the world, and whereas recognizing the development of Palm Springs into a world-class resort community is due in large part to the work of some extraordinary women, and whereas acknowledging women and girls have made significant contributions to the larger community, and they continue to provide leadership and serve a critical role in providing and caring for their families and driving positive change in their communities, and whereas women, human rights defenders, activists, and civil society leaders have worked throughout history to ensure that women and girls are guaranteed equality and fundamental human rights. fundamental human rights. And whereas women and girls around the world have fundamental rights, contribute substantially to food security, economic growth, the prevention and resolution of conflict, and the sustainability of peace and stability. And whereas women must have meaningful opportunities to participate more fully in and lead the political, social, and economic lives of their communities. And whereas the advancement and empowerment of women and girls is critical to the achievement of global peace and prosperity.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Palm Springs Human Rights Commission and City Council of Palm Springs, California, calls for women's right to decision-making in all areas of life, equal pay, equal sharing of unpaid care and domestic work, and end to all forms of violence against women and girls, health care services that respond to their needs, be it further resolved, the City of Palm Springs reaffirms the commitment to end discrimination and violence against women and girls, to ensure the safety, health, and welfare of women and girls, to pursue policies that guarantee the fundamental human rights of women and girls, and to promote meaningful and significant participation of women in every aspect of society and community, including conflict prevention, protection, peacemaking, and be it further resolved that the empowerment of women and girls is inexorably linked to a community's potential to generate economic growth, self-reliance, sustainable peace, and democracy.
Be it further resolved that March 2021 is proclaimed International Women's Month in Palm Springs, California. We encourage all people to share in the pride of our city's diverse citizenry by observing International Women's Month in Palm Springs and recognize the women and girls of Palm Springs for their many contributions. So thank you to our councilmembers for reading that and proclaiming that here tonight. And thank you to our Human Rights Commission and Chair Ram DeHart for bringing that forward and doing that as well as the Human Rights Commission. Next, we have a COVID-19 case update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Just a quick update on COVID. Actually, there's a couple of updates that I've gotten since I made these slides, so I'll just add those notes at the end. As most of you probably know, the state has indicated that Riverside County is going to be eligible to move into the red tier. That could be as early as tomorrow, could be next week. There's a couple of different things that hinges on. Right now, our daily case count is above the current threshold of seven cases per 100,000 per day. We're at 7.8. But the actual bans for the tier system are going to change. So there's two things that could drive us into the red tier. Either our cases continue to go down, which that's the trend that they're making, or the state's going to broaden the current ban to 10 cases per 100,000. So either way, we're moving towards red, hopefully soon. Some of the things that that's going to change is we're going to go back to indoor dining, indoor gyms, movie theaters going to open, religious services are going to have additional capacity. The full list of what changes in the red tiers on the state's website, but for our businesses here, going back to indoor dining is fantastic news. And I put a screenshot of what the new tier system is going to look like. There's going to be two changes over the next several weeks based on vaccination. So once those actually change, I'll update that, but that's just a snapshot of what that change will look like. And some numbers, just to show that we are trending in the right direction. Going back for the past 12 weeks, if you look at our peak weekly case rate, Riverside County had over 34,000 cases in one week in mid-January. So far this week, Riverside County's had 635 cases. Palm Springs, that same week back in January, we had 438 cases in one week. And so far this week, we've had eight. So that's very positive news that reflects people are doing the right thing, wearing masks, social distancing, and moving us rapidly towards that red tier. For testing and vaccination, this is one of the things that I just got news of. So I have down on the bottom left that Monday changes. The age bracket, 18 to 64 with underlying health conditions, are going to be eligible for the vaccine. I have TBD on the bottom for additional critical essential workforce. So transportation, finance, congregate living shelters, so a lot of those essential workforce sectors will reopen on Monday. I just got that coming into this meeting, so I'm going to look into that once this is done. Another piece of positive news is people have been asking, how will I know what vaccine I'm going to get, whether it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, Pfizer, or Moderna? Some of the websites to book your appointment are putting which vaccine you can get on which day. So for those people that are interested in a specific vaccine, you can choose which vaccine you get, assuming that they have appointments available. Just a reminder, though, if you have gotten one vaccine already, you cannot mix and match. It is not good for your health. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any. Thank you so much for the report and all of your work keeping us safe. And I just heard this week that we vaccinated over 7,000 people at the Palm Springs Convention Center so far. So really amazing work in our community. Thank you to everyone for getting vaccinated, and we will get everyone, you know, who wants a vaccine here, one pretty soon. Next, we have a presentation about our COVID-19 wastewater from Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and following along with what you just heard, we're pleased to report the continuing trend down in the amount of COVID virus that's present in the wastewater. As you know, we've been performing these samples and tests since mid-August, and we saw the peak that represented the same peak we see statewide and throughout the country. As I've indicated in the past, the peak for us was right between Christmas and New Year's with 2.6 million copies of the virus per liter. And you can see what we all wanted to see and hope to see continuing, that downside slope of this hill. With the latest sample that we have a test from, which is last Tuesday, the amount of virus is all the way down to just over 25,000 copies of the virus per liter. So based on that sample, this is awesome because we're seeing that the estimated positive cases represented on that day, which was March 2, ranged from 44 to 195 cases. Their best estimate is 83 cases. And as you can see, that is tracking exactly what the county's reporting, which is 70 active cases in Palm Springs. So to give it in perspective, as I said, we had 4,800 cases back on December 28th. We now have 83 cases. And that, if you're following along at home and doing the math, that should be 98%. I got a little crazy in my typing. But we basically had a 98% reduction in positive cases in nine weeks. And that's representing where we were back when we were in the red tier. And so we're hopeful that we'll get into the red tier and actually further into the orange tier. So we're happy with those results, and that completes my report, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Marcus. Councilmember, questions or comments? Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Marcus, for doing this and those graphs and providing these every week. It's so important. Just want to share a couple of things. One is, you know, we got to these numbers because so many people followed the rules and continue to do so. And I've had some questions about why people still need to wear masks. And it's so important we continue to go down to orange and get out of this and not see it go in reverse. So I just want to reiterate the importance of following the rules, practicing social distancing, wearing masks, washing your hands. The more we do that, the quicker we're going to really get through this. And we don't want to see it go the other way and lose any lives or see businesses close down. And the second thing is it's really important, and it's been an issue. We are now under the average for testing in the county. And so people can still get tested and should still get tested. And it's Desert Hot Springs, their community center is the county site that's closest. It's about 15 minutes, depending on where you live in Palm Springs, a little closer for some, further for others. And you can get appointments same day, anytime that works for you. They open at 7:00 a.m. So I just want to really remind people it's important to get tested. Even if you've been vaccinated, you can still be carrying the virus and transmitting it. So please take the time. Anyone wants to meet me at 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday, you're welcome to join me next week. But I just signed up today, and every single day was available. So I just want to let folks know that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors. Mayor Protem Middleton.
I want to second everything that Councilmember Coors said. Thank all of our staff and everyone across the city for all of the work that we've done. But as we move forward, and we hope we are moving forward in a positive direction, let us not forget that across the country, over 325,000 lives have been lost in our own city. We've lost 110 of our neighbors and our friends and our family. And if you're debating the question as to whether to put that mask on and cover your face for a few more weeks, please think of all of those folks that we have lost. We do not want to go back to the dark days of late December and early January when so many precious lives were lost.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the next presentation is of the audit report by the PUN group.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would just like to start off by saying this is our annual audit that gets presented to the city council. The auditor who did the audit is here to make a presentation. The Finance Director will introduce him in a moment. I just wanted to note that there were a couple of notes and findings that the auditor has made. They have been corrected, and he will explain what those are, and the Finance Director will have some additional comments. So Nancy, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to Ken Punn, who is the managing partner of the auditing firm, the PUN Group. They had completed our audit for the first year, June 30, 2020. I'd like to introduce you. Ken is here to join in on us. And Ken, I'm not sure if you want to show the PowerPoint, or do you want me to go ahead and flip through it for you?
I can do it from here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And council, I would note that this is in the form of a presentation. When the item is on consent as receive and file, staff will be asking that to be pulled from consent for a separate vote. But this is the time where we will have the presentation, and certainly you can ask questions as well at this time. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and member of the city council. Again, my name is Ken Punn. I'm the managing partner of the Punn Group and also the engagement partner ultimately responsible for this particular audit. We are the new audit firm looking at your financial during this fiscal year. So doing that tonight is actually presenting the audit results and the required communications to the city council tonight. So let's go to the next slide here. So let's discuss our responsibility in accordance with the current professional auditing standard. So you engage us to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard and in accordance with the government auditing standard. We are here to form and express our opinion to determine whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and also it's in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. Our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance about the financial statement are free from material misstatement, whether caused by errors or fraud. And we consider internal control over financial reporting. However, such consideration is solely for the purpose of determining our audit procedures and not to provide the assurance on the internal control effectiveness here. So jumping into our audit results, for the financial statement audit, we issue an unmodified opinions, basically state that the financial statements are fairly present in all material respects, sinestra accounting policy have been consistently applied, estimates are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. Very importantly, this year because of COVID-19, we basically, GASP actually issued a statement number 95 to defer all the implementation of new GASP pronouncements. So therefore, there's no new accounting principle that is currently adopted for the current fiscal year. As required by the auditing standard, and then because this is completed under the government auditing standard, we are required to also communicate to you regarding any internal control matters identified in the audit. So we have 2020-01 regarding the internal control over financial reporting, and then 2020-02 regarding the Internal Service Fund. And those two are considered findings in our audit. So let's talk a little bit about the first one, internal control over financial reporting. Why we are actually issuing this finding? Because we actually identify a couple of the adjustments that needs to be made to correct the transactions that were incurred in the previous year. In the airport fund, we actually have this two findings. And one is relating to a couple of the capital projects that was being done in fiscal year 18 and 19. Those projects, including TSA renovation, airfield design, and whole-room chairs. And those assets was actually being acquired or finished in the previous year. However, the asset was not even accounted for on your balance sheet, so that's why we need to actually recording an asset as a result to increase your airport fund balance by 647,000. The other one is actually it's a duplicate liability that we noted in the airport fund. So this has to do with the long-term agreement with the car rental agency that requires the vendor to pay a minimum annual guarantee. We found that the $1.26 million was actually booked in two fiscal year, in 2016 and 17, and 2017 and 18. This is actually a duplicate, so as a result, we need to remove the one of the liabilities, so kind of increase the airport fund fund balance by 1,026,000. The last one here is actually relating to the former redevelopment agency here. So there are a couple housing loans that was not really adjusted during, over the years. There are new loans being provided to housing agency as a forgivable loan. And a couple of the loan amounts were not adjusted. So as a result, the fund balance for the redevelopment agency is increased by $700,000. So which is a positive adjustment, but at the end of the day, because it is a prior period adjustment, so that's why we would like the city to consider and look at the constantly review your transactions and making sure that these transactions are recorded in the right accounting period. Finding 2020-02 is relating to Internal Service Fund. Internal Service Fund is being used to accumulate, like to do cost allocation. However, during the fiscal year when we first picked it up, there were a couple of the funds has a cumulative deficit in the fund balance. Those included the employee benefit funds, the retiree health insurance fund, and the co-generative. cogeneration plant fund. So for the employee benefit fund and the retiree health insurance fund, those are the, the city actually did actually record the pension obligation bond and then also the OPAP liabilities, including in those two funds. And the cogeneration plant fund basically is similar to the airport fund. You actually finish up the capital asset in the previous year and that wasn't included in the, as an asset on the cogeneration plant fund. So as a result, we are making adjustment into those three funds. So for employee benefit fund, we removed the 2007 pension obligation bond balance and that will be removing the $15 million of the negative fund balance. And then after the adjustment of the pension obligation bond and put it back to the government-wide financial statement, the beginning balance of the 2021 fiscal year, you will have a positive fund balance of $5.7 million. For retiree health insurance, basically similar to the employee benefit fund, but because the OPAP liability was not consistently reported, similar to the pension accounting. So that's why you do actually have a $149 million of deficit in the retiree health insurance fund. After removing the OPAP liability and allocate back to the proper fund, at the end of the day, you do have a positive fund balance of $2.1 million.
And Ken, before you go on to the cogeneration plan, if I could just note to council, on the employee benefits fund and the retiree health, as you can see, when we looked at what we believed was occurring there, the GASP rules had changed, which basically said you have to make sure that you show all your pension liabilities everywhere, in essence, upfront. You've got to make sure that's very clear. And so what staff did is that it was in the general long-term debt, which the auditor is saying it should go back to, but they put it in the, where they moved it into the fund that they moved it into that showed a negative balance. In their mind, they were showing that is that it's an, we owe it. So it's very clear that we have that as a debt. So all we're doing is moving it back to the other accounting fund where it was originally. So it doesn't show as a debt, but it still actually is.
Yes. Yeah, it is a booking, the fund accounting versus government-wide accounting recording. So last, the cogeneration plan is actually reporting a $4.9 million that was being completed and recorded as an asset. So at the end of the day, after moving the asset into the fund, you do actually reflect a positive fund balance of two points, close to $2.5 million at the end of June 30, 2020. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Mayor Protem Middleton. Mayor Protem, you're muted.
My apology. Couple of questions for you. And I'm going to get into some specific questions. First, I want to begin with just some general ones. They're in your written report, but I want to get them on the public record. Did you have access to all materials that you saw?
Yes, we do have all access to the information that we need.
And was there anything that you asked for that was denied to you or was not provided to you?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. And was staff cooperative, uncooperative, receptive?
They're cooperative to all of our requests.
All right. And for the recommendations that you made with regard to changes, was there any pushback from staff with these changes that were recommended?
Yeah, there were no disagreement and there's no pushback on the recommendations that we recommended.
All right. This was your first year performing an audit for City of Palm Springs?
Correct.
Okay. In your past experience, when doing an audit of an organization for the first time out, is it unusual to find that there are things that were accounted for in one accounting ledger that should have been in another?
No.
So this is, what you found is common to?
Is common, yes.
Okay. And the net result of this, these changes that you were making in terms of where things were accounted for, does that change the ultimate status of the financial position of the City of Palm Springs?
Well, based on the adjustment that we made and the prior period adjustment, it's actually have a positive favorable result to your financial position. There's a lot of time we did our search for and record liabilities. All the liabilities are being recorded properly. So at the end of the day, when we look at these financial, like the adjustment that we talked about is either booking into a different fund or it's favorable to your ending financial position. So basically, it's positive for these findings.
Okay. Do you have a total figure of how much more positive you believe it is?
You know what? Let me go back to your financial statements. So at the end of the day, your general fund is your main operating fund of the city. So basically, you do have about like ending June 30, 2020, you do end it with a total fund balance of $48 million.
Okay. All right. Mr. Punn, thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any. Thank you so much for your work. We very much appreciate it and for the presentation tonight.
You are really welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Punn. The next item on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note extensions or no votes on consent calendar items or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for, yep?
I'm sorry. So we do have one additional presentation on the lease revenue bonds, if I may. Apologize.
Go ahead.
And Aaron, can you please let Ms. Harrell in? Council, I just wanted to note that this is item 5D. We were having the presentation here from our financial advisor. Just wanted to get upfront so you understood exactly what we're doing, but the actual item is at 5D and we'll have the discussion then. But Suzanne Harrell, our financial advisor, is just going to take a couple moments to indicate the benefits and what this is and why we are doing it. Suzanne?
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I believe staff has put together one slide, one slide only, with some highlights of the refinancing that you're going to be considering later this evening. It is a refinancing of your 2012 bonds that were used to fund the downtown revitalization program. Those bonds have an average rate of 4.55%. The refinancing is expected to have an interest rate between 2.12 and 2.30% depending on market conditions. The total savings, therefore, the comparison of the net cost of the 2012 bonds to the net cost of the 2021 bonds, you'll save between 4.1 and 4.4 million, depending on what the final interest rates are. You've chosen to take those savings upfront over this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And so all the savings are kind of front-loaded so that you get the benefit of that to offset some of the financial impacts of the pandemic. And so that'll be $2.4 million savings in this current fiscal year because you had a payment that was due June 1 that you won't have to make. And then the balance of the savings will take place, you'll realize next fiscal year. And these savings are net of all the cost of issuance, which are already factored into the size of the bond issue. The debt service on the 2012 bonds is paid by the Measure J Fund and we expect that to continue. We did shorten the final maturity of the bonds from 2035 to 2034 because your original bond issue has a cash funded reserve fund that would have offset the final payment. And because of your credit rating, you won't need to set aside a cash reserve fund for that final payment. So we just shortened it by one year so that your net-to-net payments would be the same number of years. And then one of the nice things about the refinancing, in addition to the savings, is that we're able to release some of the property that was used to originally secure the lease because you've paid down so much of the principal already. So we're able to release those two downtown parcels. I think you call them the expansion parcels, the ones that you're going to use for open space and events and so forth. And so they're no longer encumbered by the lease. Two of your four fire stations that were included in the original lease are not necessary, as well as the skate park and the leisure center. So we are releasing some of the assets that you can, you know, which is always a good thing. And that concludes that information.
Thank you, Suzanne. And council, I did want to note that one of the reasons we wanted to include that last bullet point is by releasing these, in essence, this does give council some additional latitude and ability to do other debt in the future if you wanted to. This was limiting our ability to do additional debt, but with this release, you have this to use for in the future. So that is one of the other benefits of this bond refinance, in addition to saving a couple million dollars. Thank you. And thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from councilmembers or comments? I don't see any. Thank you so much for the presentation and all of your work.
It was nice to see you all again. Thank you.
Thanks for being here with us in our Zoom room. The next item is acceptance of the agenda. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote?
And, Mayor, this is the city clerk. And staff would like to remove item 1G for separate discussion related to the audit reports.
For a separate vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items?
I'm sorry, Mayor. We lost your audio.
Sorry about that. So we need a motion for acceptance of the agenda with item 1G pulled for separate discussion.
And make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Corr?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next is report of closed session. If city attorney Ballinger could provide that, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. The city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda as well as one added item, a case entitled Huarto versus City of Palm Springs, which the city clerk has the title of, and there was no reportable action.
The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening around 9:00 or 9:30 p.m. So tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, if you could please begin.
Robert Patterson, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, this is Robert Patterson. I am an attorney at SDEM here in Palm Springs and we present the applicant Mass Flora LLC with regards to item number five on your agenda. And so we want to be able to answer any questions or provide comment during the discussion of the item. So I just want to make you aware of that. Another important point to make here is that this involves release from the minimum separation distance requirement for a cannabis dispensary. And indeed, the application that our client filed, at the time it was filed, the minimum separation distance rule did not apply. So they didn't buy this property or submit this application at the time of this minimum separation distance requirement. That was imposed later and so they didn't create this issue. And we're hopeful that you will give them a positive outcome to their matter. And I appreciate very much your taking the time to consider this matter. Thank you. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you and we'll disconnect. James Coffey, you're live with Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
You've called the wrong telephone.
Oh, I'm. Thank you. Marie Fonseca, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hi, this is Marie Fonseca. I'm with Mass Flora LLC and we're on agenda 5A, I believe it is, for Mass Flora LLC. And we were recommended, last time we had the council meeting, we were recommended to go to Architectural Review Board, which we did and we passed unanimously. It's a beautiful project and it's going to make the building better than what it is now. And it's going to provide some jobs and bringing in some revenue, which will be great. When we did purchase the building, we made sure and got confirmation from the city directly that there was no distance restriction for it. So we moved forward and we submitted our application and our application was being processed by the city for about five months before the new law with the distance requirements went into place. So we are hoping that you will give us the modification to be able to move forward with our project and get this building looking great and being a good functioning portion of the community.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll disconnect now.
Thank you.
James Coffey, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you.
Hello, James?
Good. Hi, I'm here. Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. James Chioffi, architect. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is James.
Yeah. Did you want to provide any comments? At this point, the council is not asking any questions. Do you want to provide comments?
I'm ready to provide a comment. Can you hear me? Can they hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could reduce your volume, it's creating a loop for us.
Yeah, it is. I can see that here. Just a second. Members of the council. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, James Chioffi, architect. Uh, I'm the architect for the project on Sunny Dunes, item number five. I just wanted to say briefly, uh, we're really pleased to be, uh, able to restore this building to its, uh, former, uh, condition. This building's always been kind of a favorite of mine. It was, uh, it was designed and built by Howard Lappam, one of our noted, uh, mid-century architects here in Palm Springs, and actually was his office at one time. And so, um, we're again pleased to be able to, uh, restore the building to what it looked like when Howard, uh, had it. Uh, we've made the color changes. We've stripped off some, uh, air conditioning units, restoring the glass and the doors to the way they were originally, and, um, that sort of thing. We're really pleased. We had a very good, uh, very good positive meeting with the Architectural Advisory Committee, and they had a few comments and, uh, thoughts, which we will incorporate, uh, when we finish up with our permit process. Uh, we added some landscaping and lighting and other things that weren't present when, uh, when the building was first, uh, built. And so, uh, we're pleased with it and proud of it, and hope you, uh, hope you like the design. And I'm available for questions. Did you have any questions regarding the, uh, the architectural part of the process? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll disconnect. Chris Gonzalez, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, good evening. How's everyone doing? Uh, I'm just following in on guys. You know, I'm a, I'm a worker at the Palm Springs Grocer Store, which is a Ralph's same address apartment over there at the store. Uh, regarding to the hero pay, I, uh, I definitely, uh, one hundred percent agree that, uh, this should be followed this and go through for all of it. Um, and so workers, you know, on the front line, and, uh, dedicating their lives for everyone, go ahead and, uh, grocery shop, get the groceries, survive. Um, I had to, I had to talk to the virus myself, live last year, me and, uh, my family. There was a scary, scary, um, incident that we had to go through. Um, I'm very grateful and blessed to still be here, you know, with a double of casualties, this unexplainable, I mean, the gas, I mean, uh, from the coronavirus, um, as it started in, I mean, World War One, World War Two, eleven, um, that's just, it's crazy, you know, and we're spending our, out there every day, um, to provide for everybody. Um, scary, I feel that the, that our company, um, should pass this, um, you know, I sell the, uh, uh, the lack of help that we're getting, you know, the thirty-nine hours to, to serve everyone, so very stressful. And, um, especially the city of Palm Springs, it's a sophisticated city, um, people come from all over the world. We come straight from an international airport. It's just packed with people. We're dealing with people every day without wearing masks. Twenty people gathered around us, so we're kind of quiet, everyone. Understand everyone needs groceries and everything, but, um, just a lot of stress on us. Um, the four dollars definitely helped tremendously. I mean, I come from a family of five, and the company provided us a few times with a hundred dollars to a member's card, but that hundred dollars may work for a single family, and we use it at that store, but the tax write-off. Very hard, I mean, a hundred dollars is nothing, you know. My kids at home, and they can't go to school, and, uh, the kids are just eating all day. So a hundred dollars to go, it's really bad people.
So Drew, uh, your time has, uh, I'm sorry. Chris, uh, your time has elapsed.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just hope you guys find your time. Please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Joe Duffel, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Um, I want to speak on the hero pay. Um, recently, you know, the Chamber of Commerce has made some comments regarding hero pay, um, that it is an inconvenient timing for this, but the men and women that work in these stores and the men and women that are facing pandemic on the frontline over a year now, it has been inconvenient for them as well. And I thought that those remarks were, uh, very insincere. Um, I believe we need to reframe, or reframe the conversation and begin to view workers as an asset and not an inconvenience or a liability. Also, the grocery, the California Grocers Association had made a comment that they were considering pulling their convention from the City of California, and the city was going to lose revenue as a result of that. Well, I will tell you, and you want to talk about good jobs, and I hear people talk about good jobs all the time, when the Riviera closed down and laid off, or excuse me, terminated all of those union workers, all of the unions, including banks, and these are hundreds of unions that are part of the F L C I O that had conventions in the City of Palm Springs every year, and I would argue to say it was hundreds of millions of dollars that the city lost, and that we're forced to go to neighboring communities like San Diego, L.A., or even out of state in Nevada to hold our conventions. So let's talk about that, and let's talk about those jobs that were lost. Um, I, I, I think it's very disingenuous. I think it's time that we begin to look at workers as an asset, we begin to honor our workers, and we begin to understand that when our workers make a living and our workers are making a good living, that is, brings value to our community. When you have corporations that come in and make billions of dollars, and that money leaves the city and goes to stockholders and goes for stock buybacks, that's shameful. That does not benefit our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Madam Mayor, I'm just getting the next speaker in the line. Thank you. Hello, Samuel Flores?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Awesome, yeah, thank you for the time. Um, so, uh, yeah, my name is David Boil. I'm the lead organizer for Coachella Workers Coalition. Uh, we advocate labor rights here in Coachella Valley. Um, so I'm here to ask you pass ordinance requiring corporate grocers, retail properties, hotels, and restaurant franchises to pay their workers five dollars or more per hour in hero pay. In December of twenty twenty, Kroger's released a report titled Third Quarter Twenty Twenty Results. According to the report, uh, the total company sales were twenty-nine point seven billion in the third quarter, uh, compared to twenty-eight, uh, billion for the same period as last quarter. Uh, this means that the company's third quarter sales increased one point seven billion from twenty twen- twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. On addition, Kroger, looking to examine the record, uh, pandemic profits and pandemic pay, as thirteen of the largest retail and grocery companies in the country, uh, combined, the thirteen companies earned an additional seventeen point seven billion in their first three quarters of twenty twenty compared to, uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, so at the moment, Kroger's has no hero pay for workers, though it doubled its profit, and spent nearly a billion dollars in twenty twenty to buy back its own stock shares. Uh, how rich, the company spent nearly one point nine billion in stock buybacks in the first three quarters. Uh, it still no, uh, has further pure research found that more than, uh, fifty per, fifty-one percent of households in the U.S. earning under fifty thousand face financial security. Um, we need to understand that grocery workers are men and women who come from black and indigenous and other communities of color. Uh, our workers are enduring constant, uh, anxiety from, from potential spread, uh, 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 sorry, uh, potential spread and financial debt. We're seeing how little these corporations care about their employees, about their community. We're witnessing corporations extracting wealth, uh, from our labor power in our community. Uh, our workers face the violence of poverty in their struggle to pay for food, rent, car insurance, et cetera. Uh, they simply see a working class community of commodities, responsible for profits, and that's unacceptable. Our workers have been called heroes due to the pandemic, and if we truly believe that, treat them as so. Please pass an ordinance giving them five more dollars an hour in hero pay. Uh, council members, you also mentioned the empowerment of women. It's important to note that the First International Women's Day was initiated by workers demanding bread and peace, end quote. Uh, so please, uh, make that, uh, promise or, or, you know, uh, hope, uh, true. Please, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mariel Valnunis?
Yes.
You're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Mayor Valnunis, and I'm speaking in behalf of Engage Coachella Valley. I'm here to speak about agenda item three A, uh, supporting the urgency ordinance, hero pay. I support, you know, the hero pay, uh, the frontline grocery workers. Uh, they put their lives on the line for us, uh, and not only risking themselves, their lives, but their families, so that we have food on our table. So we need to invest in our workers. They were there for us, we need to be there for them. It's not only the right thing to do, if we invest with workers, we invest here locally, and that's, um, uh, investing back to our city. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, um, is, uh, if Palm Springs, uh, could introduce an anti-Asian hate attack ordinance resolution, um, we have Coachella Valley Immigrant, uh, Inland and Great Partnership, uh, all the different groups that represent people of color that would support this ordinance. There's been a lot of attacks, especially during the global epidemic, against, uh, our Asian-American, uh, brothers and sisters. So thank you so much, uh, and, uh, and please support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Yes, did you want to speak? I'm going to be live right now. Yeah. Scott Lacquer?
My name's Scott.
Lacquer, uh, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Um, my name's Connor Carr. I work at Ralph's down there on Sunrise Ramone. Um, I believe we deserve hero pay. Uh, you know, we're dealing with all the, you know, tourists and stuff that come into Palm Springs, you know, um, and, uh, I believe we're hard workers and, um, everybody in this, you know, in the grocery business is, is subject to being around other people that come from all over, and I believe we deserve the hero pay. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
I'm just getting the next speaker. Thank you. David Weiner, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hey, hi. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and City Council, City staff. My name is David Weiner. I am a sixteen-year resident of Palm Springs, and I'm calling today about, um, the hero pay ordinance. Uh, I told you a couple weeks back, you know, about my strong support of the hero pay ordinance for, um, grocery workers and other essential workers, people that have been deemed essential workers and have allowed, have allowed us to, uh, keep maintaining our households, uh, telling us, um, the items that we need to be able to survive and live in our community, um, and encountering literally hundreds of people every day. Um, when this pandemic started, uh, these workers were compensated, um, by the corporate, uh, the corporations that employed them, um, and were given an extra anywhere from two to four dollars. Um, I think it is essential that we continue this practice. Um, and since the corporations don't seem to be willing to do it themselves any longer, this is when it is appropriate for government to come in and advocate for these people, the people in our community. Um, we all know the profits that Kroger Corporation and other grocery stores and retailers have been raking in for the last two years, and I think to ask the same companies to provide a little more for their workers, so they can purchase health insurance or take care of their family, um, and, and as a way to say, we appreciate what you do for us every single day. These are our friends, these are our neighbors, these are our family members, and I think it's just a small, uh, way that we can say, uh, your contributions, and we appreciate them. So thank you so much for your time, and, uh, hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. We'll disconnect. Nick Burrow, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nick Burrow, and I'm here to speak on item three A on the agenda. On behalf of Palm Springs Grocers, California Grocers Association respectfully asks that you do not move forward with the grocery, grocery worker premium pay ordinance, given numerous negative consequences to grocery workers, neighborhoods, and the grocery industry. We agree that grocery workers serve a vital, essential role during the pandemic. They've worked tirelessly to keep stores open for consumers, allowing for our communities to have uninterrupted access to food and medications. To protect our employees, employees, grocery stores were among the first and continue to implement numerous safety protocols, including providing PPE and masks, performing wellness checks, enhancing sanitation and cleaning, limiting store capacity, and instituting social distance requirements, among other reasons. On top of increased safety measures, grocery employees have also received unprecedented amount of supplemental paid leave to care for themselves and their families in addition to already existing leave benefits. Grocers have also provided employees additional pay and benefits in various forms, including hourly and bonus pay, averaging an extra two to three dollars, along with other significant forms of support. The grocery worker pay ordinance would mandate grocery stores provide additional pay beyond what is economically feasible, with a near thirty percent increase in employment costs. This significant increase severely impacts store viability and results in increased prices for groceries, limited, limited operating hours, reduced hours for workers, fewer workers per store, and most concerning possible store closures. The negative impacts from the ordinance would be felt most acutely by independent grocers, ethnic format stores, and stores serving low-income neighborhoods. We respectfully implore the council to not move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance at this time. If council must bring the ordinance forward for a vote at this time, we ask that you oppose its passage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Madam Mayor, I'm going to try one more person who hasn't, not picked up, before I'll the comments over. Madam Mayor, uh, that does conclude public comment. Um, I did try to reach Matt Bosquette, uh, four times, uh, but with no answer, and Sergio Zinde, sorry, Zinde Heras, uh, has not picked up, um, either. And that does conclude public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is City Council and City Manager comments and reports. Are there any council members who'd like to give a report at this time? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to raise one item here at the top of the meeting that doesn't get lost, uh, later on, and that's, uh, the Palm Springs High School Homecoming Parade and Graduation Parade. So in years past, we have, um, helped to, uh, I guess alleviate costs from the homecoming parade by kind of absorbing some of those costs into our budget, and this year, um, they are going to try to do a homecoming parade in the coming weeks, and then they're also trying to have a graduation parade. So our students at the high school, uh, this is now the second group of students that's not having their traditional activities in the year in school, uh, so I just wanted to put that, um, out there and see if council members were in agreement with, um, supporting these two events, and then, um, the city manager could bring that back at our next meeting, um, for approval, um, if there's willingness from the council. Just wanted to put that out there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is I know in, in council Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is I know in, in council meeting comments, sometimes we have lots of things to say about regional meetings or, um, other things, subcommittees that we're doing work on, um, but one thing that I think, uh, we don't often talk about is just the individual meetings we have with residents. And I know I have a ton of meetings with residents, sometimes they're phone calls, uh, Zooms, or just emails that we exchange back and forth, and I'm, I'm not the only one that, that spends a lot of time doing that. And I just want to thank our residents for being involved, for reaching out. Uh, it's, it's, I think we're all pretty accessible, and, and for me, I'm, it's really important to me that I connect with all of you and, and have an opportunity to really discuss the issues that are on your mind, and I, I know I always sound like a broken record, but I, I know we're not always going to agree, going to agree, and that's okay. But at least let's have the conversation and see if there is something that we can, uh, work on together, or if you have a point of view that maybe I, I haven't thought about before, and I want to hear those, those thoughts. So thank you so much, uh, for, to our residents for that. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've been through this pandemic for one year, and that's a lot. It's really hard on all of us, and it's wonderful to see that our case numbers are going down, but I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge, uh, all of the pressure and stress that everyone has been under this past year, and the collective, the collective grief that we've all experienced. And we've all experienced this pandemic in different ways, but it's still been, been hard on everyone. Uh, so if you're having a hard time right now thinking about one year ago today or this month, um, give yourself a break, take a deep breath. Uh, we're all in this together and trying to move forward, and it's okay if it's really hard right now for, for you. It's, it's hard for me, I think it's hard for most of us. So just take that moment to reflect and, um, reach out to people if you need to. Thank you.
Thank you, member, thank you, Councilmember Garner, for those comments. Mayor Protem Middleton.
Great. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I'm a part of the Advancing Equity Task Force of Cal Cities. We've had two meetings now, uh, making, I think, some really good progress, and, uh, by the end of April should have a report that will be available. Uh, this is a very diverse, uh, uh, group of, uh, individuals from across, uh, the state of California. I'm pleased to have three members of the LGBTQ community that are part of, uh, the task force, and, uh, we received at our last meeting an absolutely outstanding, uh, presentation, uh, put together by the National League of Cities concentrating on, uh, equity issues with relation to the African-American and Latino, uh, communities, uh, and again, I look forward to being able to present, uh, to council along with, uh, everyone else, uh, the findings and recommendations of this group. Uh, secondly, last Monday evening, uh, uh, Cal City's Riverside Division had a presentation from Rachel Carpenter. She is the chief, uh, safety officer for Caltrans, was extremely active in the Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force, uh, really the lead staff person on that, uh, was very well received. Uh, Assemblymember Laura Friedman has brought forward, uh, AB 43, which, uh, begins the ver- what will be a very long process of implementing, uh, the recommendations of the Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force, and I would like, uh, to ask staff to, uh, do a review of AB 43 and bring it to, uh, uh, council, and I hope, uh, that we, as the city council, can endorse passage of, uh, AB 43, which, uh, I believe will advance significantly the cause of traffic safety and greater flexibility, uh, for municipalities in determining what is a safe speed on our streets. Uh, lastly, uh, since we met last, we lost two individuals, uh, in our broader community that have made tremendous contributions to, uh, Palm Springs and to the Coachella Valley. Uh, Jim Cunningham, uh, lead of, uh, Palm Springs Disposal Services, uh, we've had, uh, absolutely wonderful service, uh, from him and his organization, uh, and Tommy Edwards, uh, uh, one of the, uh, stars, uh, that, uh, is in the background at Sunline. Uh, Mr. Edwards, over 31 years, uh, providing service, uh, to Sunline, beginning, uh, at, beginning as, uh, just simply a mechanic, and working his way up until, uh, Tommy, uh, at the time of his death, was one of the leading national, if not international, authorities on, uh, the conversion of buses to, uh, nitrogen fuels. Uh, he died, uh, along with Mr. Cunningham, much too early, and I would like to ask that we adjourn, uh, this evening in honor of Jim Cunningham and Tommy Edwards.
Thank you. Councilmember Corr.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of meetings and a couple other things. So, uh, today was the Palm Springs Hospitality Association Board Meeting, which Mayor Holstich and I were both on. Um, I think the main thing I wanted to share from that was the report that TOT was down over two-thirds in January of '21 compared to January of '20. Um, people are hoping it will start looking better, but reminded us that there are no events that are the main tourist draws between, uh, January and May this year, uh, so all those big events aren't happening, but as long as we continue to see reduced COVID numbers, people are optimistic, uh, that things will continue to improve. Um, over the last two weeks, I've been doing business walks, uh, through District 3, and have met with so many small businesses, a lot of, um, mom and pops, mom and moms, pop and pop stars, and, uh, you know, it's really, on the one hand, it was really heartbreaking just the people who, two of that, the two owners, you know, had to let go of their employees and are each working 80 hours a week just to get through this, but it was really good to hear the optimism, um, and just the appreciation for the city for helping them, for enforcing the rules, for making it safe, and for the grant program, and I was really focused on the sectors that were eligible for our city grants, and a lot of businesses had applied, a lot knew about it, and a lot didn't. So, um, it was really helpful, and I'm finding it really informative on some other things, which we'll bring forward to the Business Retention Committee, and it's a lot of folks who we don't normally hear from at meetings, because they're running their own business, they don't have time, they don't see all the information we send out, because they're just so engaged right now in keeping their businesses going. But it was great to see the optimism back, and people, uh, were really in good spirits with the new numbers. Um, I was at the, uh, Human Rights Commission on Monday. I brought forward a resolution, uh, apolog- having the city apologize for the actions taken, um, around Section 14, and I worked on the draft of that with Chairman DeHart, and Councilmember Garner gave us great feedback, which we incorporated, so thank you for that, and I'd like to ask that that come back, uh, at our next meeting, uh, so we can bring that for the full council. I'd also like at the last, next meeting, uh, if we can do a letter in support for the Sunshine Protection Act, so the Senate, in bipartisan fashion, is bringing forward legislation to allow states to make daylight savings time all year, as California voters, uh, voted for, but it can't happen until Congress acts. So I'd like us to engage, uh, in that. Um, Desert Community Energy's Community Advisory Committee has two openings, um, and, uh, Chair Friedman has asked that if we can, we'd love to get, uh, resident, a resident from District 1 and a resident from District 4, so I wanted to pass that on both to the public and to our council members from those districts. Other people are also welcome to apply, but it'd be great to have someone from each of our five districts on that. Um, yesterday, Mayor Holstich and I had a COVID Task Force meeting, really good conversation about a number of issues, and one was how we handle, uh, back rent that is due at the end of the month or in April. Uh, when we set the ordinance to allow businesses, um, to delay paying rent, we weren't expecting a separate close down, and most landlords seem to be working well with the tenants, but we have heard from some folks who are really concerned that the landlord isn't giving them more time, and so we're going to have, um, some meetings next week, one with landlords, one with, uh, tenants that are impacted, so we can get as much information as possible, but if we can have that on the agenda, because we don't do it next, next meeting, uh, people would be put in a difficult situation. Uh, the California Mayor's Coalition, Treasurer Fiona Ma, joined us at our last meeting, Mayor Holstich was on it as well, and one of the things that we discussed, and I've since brought up with Assemblymember Mays, was that we really, um, hope the legislature will consider exempting grants that cities are giving to businesses, and rent relief and other, uh, benefits we're giving to residents from state income taxes here, that, you know, to take government money and give it to people and then have the state just tax it at a large rate, uh, doesn't seem fair in a pandemic given the situation. Um, so I wanted to share that, and maybe we can bring back a letter on that on consent at the next meeting, and I could provide one for staff. Uh, and I think the most important thing I did was, on Monday, I took the vegan cooking class benefiting the animal shelter. Um, so Avra Gonzalez from May 49 taught us how to make plant-based crab or crabless cakes, which were really yummy, um, and this, all the money, uh, for doing this goes to the animal shelter, which is such an important part of our city. So I just want to let people know, on April 12th, Chef Tanya from Chef Tanya's Kitchen will be teaching us how to make veggie gaucho steaks with chimichurri sauce, rainbow charred stuffed baked potatoes, and quick apple crunch, uh, and you can sign up, it's $40 per household, uh, to do this, and all the money goes to the animal shelter, and the chefs are donating their time. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on, um, Councilmember Garner's, um, comments about COVID. I just want to remind everybody that we're very close to going to a tier that will give us much more liberties, which is fantastic, and that is, it's a great degree by everyone chipping in and doing their part, um, to be safe. But I just want to remind everyone, not everyone has been vaccinated, has gotten, been inoculated yet with the vaccine, so still wear your mask, still socially separate. If you're at a restaurant, try and be seven feet, six feet from the person next to you, um, and continue to do those protocols. Secondly, I, I represent the city on the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, and I just wanted to say we did one of our largest land purchases today, and part of that purch- purchase was in what's called the blow sand area around the 110. And for those of you in the audience that don't know what that means, is we have the sand that blows around the 110, and you all probably have experienced it when you've gotten off on Indian Canyon or any of the other, um, highway, uh, freeway exits, but that blow sand is very important to some endangered and threatened species that need that loose sand to hide and dig in, particularly like a fringe-toed lizard. So in, in order to maintain of that, we're continuing to buy land in that blow sand area to protect that kind of ecosystem, and we did that today. For those of you who don't know, um, many times a development needs to mitigate impacts that it has on the valley floor, and in order to mitigate those impacts, um, we have set up a program where they pay a fee and we can buy land elsewhere for species, uh, protection. The, and we've also do, that's one part of it, and another part, we collect fees basically to pay for transportation impacts. So those fees have always been, they're relatively large fees for developers, and what the CVCC has developed is a new program to help developers actually calculate those fees ahead of time, so they know what they are. It's, um, about six months out, but when it comes out, it will be a great tool for developers to start understanding some of the massive fees they have to pay for development projects, uh, within the city of Palm Springs. So with that, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have any report?
Uh, Mayor, not at this time. We're ready to move on with the balance of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two items. Um, I've gotten a number of requests as the mayor, uh, for the city of Palm Springs that really should go to the full city council, um, and the community, and are not up for me to decide. So one, uh, we got a request to participate, um, in a, the mayor's challenge for water conservation. This is through the Wieland Foundation, Toyota, and the National League of Cities. It's the 10th annual, um, and it's for the month of April, which is Earth Month. Um, and cities like Houston, Dallas, San Diego, Denver, LA, and Pittsburgh, um, are joining this effort, um, to try to save, um, 3 billion gallons of water, um, which was pledged last year alone. Um, so I think that this is aligned with the, we are our values and the priorities of our city. I've reached out to Desert Water Agency and Director Kristen Blumer there to see if they might engage with us on this effort to save water in our community. So I just wanted to flag that for the city council, if there's interest, um, in participating. Uh, we can't discuss it now because it's not agendized, um, but we can, um, move forward if you want to, uh, contact city staff if you want to be involved in this, if we want to bring it forward. Um, and then I also received a, a request, um, from My Brother's Keeper Alliance, um, which is through the Obama Foundation, to recommit, um, to reimagining policing and to do a pledge. Apparently, our community, um, had participated in this, uh, many years ago. I know the chief was involved, and this is an effort to help, um, boys and men of color in our community. Um, so I think that that also, uh, would require community and council conversation and not just a pledge from the mayor. Um, so I'm going to work with the chief on that, um, and we can, um, look and see what we did before and how we can integrate that into all of the work that we're doing. So I just wanted to raise that for the community and council, and we'll continue to bring those types of things forward, since really the leadership is, um, the entire council and, and not one mayor. So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without Item 1G, uh, which is removed for separate discussion. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar, please?
No moves.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Member Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods. I'm sorry, Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
And Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. We pulled Item 1G, which is the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Financial Audit Report of the City of Palm Springs, and that was for separate discussion and vote. Is there any discussion on that item, um, or a staff report that you'd like at this time before voting?
Uh, Mayor, I would just note, uh, this is a normally receive and file. We did have the presentation because of those specific, uh, findings that were noted. I wanted to separate it just to highlight that, uh, council was aware of what the issues were and how it was, um, finalized and, and fixed, uh, and what it actually meant, just so we could have a separate vote on that item. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you, and I'm very, I want to thank staff for all the work that went into this, and appreciate, uh, Mr. Poon and his, uh, organization for the work that they did, but I do have a question for Ms., uh, Polly.
Yes.
Uh, the prior auditor had been, uh, performing the audit for how many years?
It was approximately 10 years.
And the norm for, uh, audit engagement is how many years?
Three to five years.
And I bring that up not to cast any criticism on the prior auditor, uh, but there's very important reasons why we should rotate, uh, our auditors on a regular basis, and, uh, I think this was, uh, uh, I don't want to speculate, but, uh, I, I have no misgivings about the, the fact that we didn't change, other than it's something that we shouldn't do again, and so I would like to establish that it is city council policy, uh, to, uh, rotate our audit assignments, uh, every three to five years, uh, and that it should require council action if we do not, uh, have, uh, a rotation every three to five years.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
How are we going about making that, uh, happen, but I know Dr. Ready and Ms. Polly can put that together.
Uh, yes, actually, what I would recommend is, uh, that we, uh, it is a good idea, and there, there is, uh, well, without getting into the reasons why we hadn't done that, uh, but, but it is a, a very good policy to have, and I think we should memorialize that and institutionalize it. We will bring that actually as a resolution at the next council meeting, uh, going forward. It'll be established policy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? City Manager, you'd like a vote on this receive and file, so a motion to accept, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor, yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Corrus.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 2A, a public hearing to consider the Community Development Block Grant 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan and Budget. If we can have a staff report, please.
Is this on? Okay, there we go. Mayor Pro Tim and council, today's public hearing is the first of two public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant Funding Allocation Process. A public hearing is required to take public testimony before the annual action plan is made available for public review. A second public hearing is required for the city to approve the annual action plan estimated to take place at the April 22nd city council meeting. You will recall, the city council approved the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan last year. The CON Plan is the broader five-year Community Development Plan required by HUD for jurisdictions that directly receive HUD funds. The Annual Action Plan implements the actions, activities, and resources that will be used each year to address the priority needs and specific goals identified by the Consolidated Plan. CDBG funds are to be used for programs and projects in the city that accomplish three national objectives: benefiting low and moderate income persons, eliminating slums and blight, and meeting urgent local community development needs. It's important to note that the CDBG Program Administration cannot exceed 20% of the annual allocation. Public service grants are limited to 15% of the annual allocation, and the balance goes towards public facilities. Now, the city had recently adopted programs for the CDBG COVID funds, which relaxed that 15% limitation for public services. But now, this is the CDBG funds, and we're back to the regular formula. The total amount to be allocated is $540,000 and $416,000. And as discussed at the February 11th city council meeting, proposed allocations of the CDBG funds are for public facilities consisting of two projects: $270,000 for the Demuth Park Community Center air conditioning project, and the second project is for restroom improvements also at Demuth Park in the amount of $104,333. $48,000 is being proposed for the required Fair Housing Council services by the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County. $10,000 would continue the city's home repair program, where low-income seniors are provided with assistance for home repairs for health and safety purposes. And the remaining amount for administration in the amount of $108,000. As we've taken on a lot more activities this past year, staffing for the consultant program and administration for the program and consultants is going to be necessary. For example, the rental assistance program with Lift to Rise is already underway, so we'll need to be able to document, review, and follow up on all the good work that Lift to Rise, United Lift, is doing to assist residents with their rent. I just want to touch on a few demographic changes that had occurred over time. Households in Palm Springs have, the incomes have shifted from 2000 to 2017, and I apologize, that's pretty much the limitation of the data I had. The median household income in 2000 was $37,342, and in 2017, it was $48,126, a 28% increase, and those were adjusted for inflation. So there's a real increase in the incomes, but the negative effect of that is that it puts pressure on those in the lower income categories. And by that, I mean 54% of the Palm Springs residents would be considered in middle and upper income categories, and the remaining 46% would be considered moderate income to extremely low income. So there could be some challenges for those in that group. In terms of next steps, a 30-day public review period is expected to begin on Monday, March 15th, and will run until April 15th. A second public hearing will be scheduled for the April 22nd city council meeting, and we hope to be able to transmit the annual action plan to HUD on April 26, well before its due date of May 15th. So that concludes the presentation. If, Madam Mayor, if you'd like to open the public hearing and see if there's any public comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Not seeing any. I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if you could please contact any speakers.
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment for this public hearing.
Thank you. There being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from the council? Councilmember Garner.
If there's no comments, I would move staff recommendations.
Oh, I have a motion to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second, and then we'll do discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner.
My only discussion on the matter is, I think it's, the suggestions so far seem, seem good. Just in terms of the home improvements, I've said this before, but I just feel like there's not enough information about how residents are supposed to get this, what forms are supposed to be filled out. So if that's something that can be sent to council members, I'd appreciate that. I'd like to be able to advertise that more because I understand that we, this is something that we have some money for already, and I think there's a lot of residents that I know of that would really like to take advantage of it, but I just don't think they know about it. And then the same thing for, forgive me if I'm saying the organization wrong, I think it's the Fair Housing Council. If we can just get the same information about exactly how our residents can access those services, so that we're all on the same page, I think that would be really helpful as we kind of push out this information, since we are potentially allocating money to them.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. I had similar comments or questions about the Fair Housing Council. I know that we fund them to meet our requirement to affirmatively further fair housing in our city. It is one of the only services that low-income tenants can access for discrimination issues or tenants' rights issues. They also assist landlords. And I was just wondering if we get outcomes for that program and our funding in terms of, I think we've shared before, how many residents have been serviced by that program, and I didn't see it included here. But maybe as we move forward in this process, we could include, so we can assess that program and also help get the word out so that the community continues to know about that program as well as the one that Councilmember Garner mentioned. Other questions are coming? If not, there's a motion and a second. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Corrus.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 2B, a public hearing to consider a request by the city of Palm Springs for approval of the annual update of the Palm Springs zoning code. If we could have a staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, as you're aware, we do an annual update to the city's zoning code. The purpose of this is to correct errors that we find in the zoning code, to address changing conditions, and also to address changes in state law. In terms of the items included in this year's update of the zoning code, they are as follows. Number one, we're looking to expand permissible locations for animal-related uses, and in particular, animal daycare. We're also looking to standardize requirements for temporary structures in our commercial zones. We're proposing revisions to the setbacks for swimming pools in side and rear yard areas, and also identifying that swimming pools cannot be built in public utility easements. We are correcting the language relative to waiver of parking requirements for historic properties. As you may recall, as we were discussing the Racket Club property, what we're proposing to do is to standardize that waiver for both Class 1 and Class 2 properties. In addition, we are expanding the list of prohibited signage to also prohibit signed twirlers. And then another item that we are proposing for change is to amend our public hearing notice requirements to allow for combined hearing notices, where there may be a planning commission hearing and a city council hearing within one week of each other, so that we could use a combined notice for both of those public hearings. There are also a couple of updates that we're proposing that anticipate an updated housing element and also address some of the goals of changes in state law. The first is to eliminate a conflict in density limitations that we have between the general plan and the zoning code. The general plan should govern density for communities in accordance with state law. Our zoning code also has language relative to density limitations, and what it does in effect is it limits density to a level that's less than what would be permitted under the general plan. And so because it is basically counter to what we're trying to achieve in accommodating housing, we're proposing to eliminate the conflicting language from the zoning code. The second thing we are proposing relative to housing is to eliminate the conditional use permit requirement for housing in the city's resort overlay zone. The resort overlay zone essentially runs along Palm Canyon from its northern end to the east Palm Canyon area at the southeast area of town. It was intended to encourage the development of hotel properties in that corridor, and in its existence, it's my estimation that that's been in place for well over 30 years. It certainly has achieved that goal. Now, our goals have changed, and there is a need to accommodate housing, and we're looking at other opportunities other than single and multifamily zones. We're also looking at commercial zones. So reducing or eliminating the requirement for a conditional use permit helps to eliminate barriers to housing. One of the issues that was brought up to me earlier today is the fact that the resort overlay does extend into Section 14. We do have goals for the development of hotel properties in Section 14 adjacent to the convention center. And so what I would propose is that we revise the boundaries of the resort overlay to address that, and we'll do that in the second reading of this ordinance for you. One of the other items that we're proposing for change is relative to the P professional zone, which is essentially an office zone. Currently, it does allow accessory uses such as restaurants, banks, and fitness centers in that zone upon approval of a conditional use permit. It requires discretionary approval by the planning commission. What we are proposing is to revise that rather than requiring a conditional use permit to allow those uses by a land use permit, which is an administrative approval approved by staff. The reason for this is that we're seeing a change in our commercial market, where we have an abundance of commercial space that is underutilized. And by allowing these accessory uses more readily through an administrative process is one of the ways to encourage the lease out of vacant space in our P professional zone. In looking at the difference in time and cost for this, the conditional use permit costs generally about $8,500 in terms of the staff time and the advertising requirements. A land use permit, on the other hand, is done administratively, does not require a public hearing notice, and our fee for that is approximately $1,500. However, we are still able to condition a land use permit relative to those uses if there are any impacts that might result to adjacent properties. When this was discussed at the planning commission meeting, there was some hesitancy on the part of planning commissioners relative to this change from a conditional use permit to a land use permit as it pertained to restaurant uses. The concerns of our planning commissioners were that it might result in impacts to adjacent residential areas, as the P professional zone does come adjacent to residential areas in some sections of the community. There was also a concern that by changing from a conditional use permit to a land use permit, that it didn't give adjacent residents the opportunity to comment on any new restaurant that might be coming into that zone. And so for that reason, on that particular item, the planning commission voted four to two to approve the change, with two of our planning commissioners dissenting. The remaining members of the planning commission felt that there was adequate oversight and the ability to restrict such uses through the land use permit process, and so they voted in favor of that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that one item. With that, that concludes my presentation to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Corrus.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just two questions before the hearing. One, maybe they're related, but on the tourism overlay zone and sort of the suggestion for Palm Canyon to allow housing without a conditional use permit, I had two questions. Would that be limited to any, is that any housing? Someone wants to build a single-family 8,000-square-foot home on Palm Canyon? Would that be able to go through without a conditional use permit?
No, that would not be permissible. In our commercial zones, we allow multifamily housing, but we don't allow detached, single-family housing, so that would not be permissible.
Great, thank you. And the other question I had is, as it relates on Palm Canyon to Palm Canyon frontage space, so I know this came up with another project, is there anything that would require that that be retail or some other business that activates the street versus housing right in the frontage of Palm Canyon?
There isn't any language in our code currently. However, the review of housing in commercial zones is still a discretionary review under our site plan process. So the planning commission has the ability to review the design of such housing and also encourage some type of commercial use along the frontage. Now, we've addressed that in a couple of different ways, as you've seen with recent projects. For example, the, and I'm sorry, the name is escaping me now, on North Palm Canyon, there's a project where they have what can basically be home offices along the frontage. That's one way to deal with that. The recent Agave project, the low affordable housing project, does have space for commercial uses on the frontage. So through the discretionary review process, we can require that, but the code in and of itself does not specifically state that the frontage has to be commercial.
Great, thank you.
Other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment for tonight.
Thank you. There being no public comment, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from city council members? Or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and to thank Flynn, his team, and the planning commission for outstanding work.
Really excellent work. Thank you. And does that motion to approve include staff's recommendation to revise the boundaries of the resort overlay?
Yes.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Woods. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll read the title of the ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, adopting an annual date to the zoning code, Palm Springs zoning code, case 5.1466 ZPA. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item two C, a public hearing to consider a review of the conditional use permit for Well-in-the-Desert facility located at 441 South Caya in Celia. Staff is requesting that the public hearing be continued to March 25, 2021. Is there a motion and a second to continue this item to that date?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We're speeding along here. Does council want a break, or do you want to continue through the items? It's 7:30. We usually don't take a break yet. Do you want to continue? I just want to check in to make sure. The next item is item three A, consideration of an ordinance establishing hero pay for frontline grocery workers. If we could have a staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this item is being brought back to the City Council for consideration and possible introduction of a regular ordinance, as well as potential adoption of an urgency ordinance, as well as seeking direction from the City Council as to whether the Council wishes us to bring back any additional categories of workers. The hero ordinance, as was discussed at the last City Council meeting, is an ordinance that has been adopted by at least 15 cities within the state of California. Early on in the COVID pandemic, a number of grocery stores voluntarily provided hero pay to their workers. However, as the pandemic continued, a number of those grocery stores removed that hero pay. More recently, toward the end of 2020 and at the beginning of this year, as a result of the significant revenue and profits that grocery stores were receiving, several cities began adopting ordinances that would require hero pay for their workers. And those ordinances varied in terms of what types of industries they covered, the dollar amount, and the type of or size of the store that was covered by the ordinance. Some cities included just grocery stores. Other cities included pharmacies, retail, agriculture. The ordinance before you only covers grocery stores, not pharmacies, as was discussed at the last City Council meeting. The ordinance is modeled after the City of Long Beach ordinance, which was recently challenged, and the plaintiff's motion for preliminary injunction was denied by the federal court in that case. The ordinance before you tonight, it applies only to certain grocery stores, primarily the larger chain-type stores. The grocery stores have to have 300 workers nationally, as well as 15 workers within the City of Palm Springs. And they must either devote, they must devote either 70% of their business or 15,000 square feet of floor space to general food products. The ordinance would provide for a $4 per hour increase for the covered workers. It does not apply to managers, supervisors, or exempt employees. The proposed ordinance is limited in time. It's only for 120 days or four months, and it requires notice of the rights to the employees, as is similar in other worker protection laws. The proposed ordinance requires records to be kept by the employers for at least two years, and the ordinance is primarily enforced as a private right of action. It's not envisioned that the city itself would be taking enforcement action under this ordinance. The ordinance provides, incentivizes that type of private right of action by providing for attorney's fees for successful plaintiffs, as well as liquidated damages in the amount of two times the amount of improperly withheld hero pay. Something that is a little bit different about this draft ordinance from the Long Beach ordinance is that it provides for a prospective credit to the employers if they have voluntarily paid hero pay to their employees. And so that would recognize those employers, those grocery stores that have stood up to the plate and done the right thing. And finally, the ordinance can be exempted by an employer if they have a collective bargaining agreement that with very clear and express language exempts itself from the coverage of this ordinance. I would note that if the council is interested in adopting this ordinance, I would recommend some additional language that was inadvertently removed from the previous version. It has to do with that last provision. If a employer and a bargaining unit have a collective bargaining agreement, they can exempt themselves. However, we'd want to make clear that a unilaterally imposed collective bargaining agreement cannot exempt the employees and the employer from coverage of this, from this ordinance. So I have some draft language for the council, should the council get to that point. That concludes my presentation, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
And Mayor, if I may, there are a couple of things I would like to add to the city attorney staff report. You know, this, this is no different than anything else we've been doing during COVID. It's been extremely difficult, extremely difficult to govern, particularly in Palm Springs, where we've spent the last 15 years doing everything we can to build up our economy and invite everyone in as often as possible. COVID obviously changed all that. This issue before us this evening is difficult in the fact that we know that frontline minimum wage workers are a key to our economy, to keeping it moving. And so the desire to reward and protect and give a little extra to grocery workers is very understandable, and other cities have done it. Of course, there's always the other sides of this, and I would just like to give you just a little bit more additional information. One of the things that occurred in Palm Springs when the new Ralphs was built on Sunrise, and this is in the early 2000s, there had not been a grocery market in Palm Springs in many, many years, a new grocery market. Actually, they had been leaving. City Council at the time, their priority was to get more grocery shopping in. That Ralphs came as an opportunity, and as it went through the entitlement process, one of the concerns we had was in the Smoke Tree Center, less than about a mile and a half away, there was already a Ralphs. And the concern was, well, if the Ralphs at Sunrise goes in, a nice new one, will the one at Smoke Tree go away? And as part of this agreement and the entitlement process, City Council put in there's a condition that if the Ralphs at Smoke Tree closed within five years, they would have to pay the city, I think it was a million dollars, as an incentive to make them stay open. Well, as it turned out, it worked out well. They have stayed open all these years. So one concern I just want to throw out there we may have is, if this passes and Ralphs decides to close the store because they're so close together because of this, I have no idea whether that would be the case, but I just wanted to give you a little history on the two Ralphs from that perspective. The second item is, we also have an annual grocers, California Grocers Association Annual Meeting is a convention that we have. It's been here since 2012 annually, and they're scheduled again for September of '21, if it's possible to have. That being said, it's a, it has about 1,100 room nights, and it's a rather large convention. So again, whether this would affect that convention one way or the other, I don't know. But I did want to just raise those two issues for you, just to give you some additional background information as you discuss this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. Questions or comments from councilmembers? Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Thank you, and I want to begin by thanking everyone who's been involved in getting this before us. This has been a really tough year, as Dr. Reddy said, and there are so many people across the spectrum who have suffered as a result of COVID. Beyond the healthcare issues and the loss of life, there is also extremely important economic loss that individuals have gone through. And I should preface my remarks by saying I've spoken with numerous individuals across the city on this issue, received probably the same number of emails that all of my colleagues have received, and they're considerable and we're very appreciative of the fact that our community is engaged. But along with Councilmember Woods, I did get an opportunity to meet with a number of individuals at the Ralphs store on Sunrise at Ramon, and hear some of their stories. And I think anyone who has a chance to spend time talking with the individuals that are actually on the front line, come away impressed by what those individuals have been through over the last year, and particularly the number of times that they've been the front line on making enforcement decisions of people who did not want to cooperate with the face covering requirements, and impressed by how hard those individuals work. And they're making a salary that is frankly barely above what the minimum wage should be. And perhaps we would not be here tonight if it were not for the resistance of 50 members of the United States Senate to passage of a responsible, respectful, and necessary $15 minimum wage in our country. That said, I am concerned that there may be other workers that need to be addressed by this ordinance, specifically some of our healthcare workers that have, that interact with the public in conditions that are less than the hospital settings that COVID patients have been having to deal with. And as we also know, we've had a number of individuals in the hospital settings that have been harmed. So I have three issues with the proposal as it stands right now. So let me go through very specifically my three concerns with this proposal. It's a proposal I want to vote for, but here are my three concerns. One, I think we need to be very clear and explicit that hero pay will not apply in the future to any of the retail operations, restaurants, other operations that were closed involuntarily due to COVID, because of generalized public health orders. And I recognize that as you read through the ordinance, it's very specific, but I think we need to be equally specific that those that had to close down should not be subject to additional requirements. Secondly, I am really not able to support a ordinance that does not give full credit to any entity that has already paid a hero pay. So that if a store has, for example, paid $2 per hour for 240 or more days, then they have done what we asked them, we are now asking them to do, and they should be rewarded and thanked for what they have already done. If we do not acknowledge what people have done voluntarily, we create a situation where no one in the future will do anything voluntarily. So I think it's important that we give full credit to any hero pay that has already been made, and exempt anyone who has paid the equivalent of $4 per hour for at least 120 days. Lastly, I don't think it is fair for us as a city to impose upon others a requirement that we're not willing to impose upon ourselves. And I think we can debate as to which one of our employees have regularly been placed in similar situations to the grocery workers of being out there on the front lines, interacting with the public. But those that come to mind for me, and I'm open to discussion on this, would be police officers, firefighters, street maintenance workers, and our Parks and Recreation employees that are working with the public. I believe we should, if we're going to impose this on others, we should impose it upon ourselves for our frontline employees who are interacting with the public. I do not believe, as much as I appreciate the work of those who have not been directly interacting with the public, that we should extend the same benefit there. And with that, I look forward to hearing and exchanging with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Coors?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton. I agree with some of those, maybe not with all of those. So let me share a couple of things. So I have some questions and comments, but before, I do want to share, the mayor and I, as I said earlier, were on the Palm Springs Hospitality Association meeting today. They did vote unanimously to oppose this. The main reason they cited was concern about the grocery convention, which has an economic impact of at least $1.5 million a year, and is in September, when it's particularly slow season, and Sunday, Monday, and during the week. So as one of the liaisons, I said I would share that, so I'm sharing it, and I will move on to my questions. I had sent most of these questions to staff. I know it's hard to get answers to all these, but I do want to follow up on that. I know one of the things we asked last time was, will this cover convenience stores, like the 7-Elevens or some of the mini-marts? Do we have an answer to that by chance?
Based on our review of the square footage and our understanding of the number of employees, no, convenience stores would not be covered.
Okay, thank you. Do we know how many stores this would apply to? Or which stores this would apply to? Because I haven't seen a list.
Councilmember Coors, we had put together a list two weeks ago at your City Council meeting, and I'll apologize that I don't have that here in front of me. We did identify the number of stores that this would apply to. I'm going to say off the top of my head, there's approximately nine stores to which this would apply.
Okay, so we don't think it'll apply to any others? Because I've been asked that question, so.
No, we don't.
Okay. Do we know, you know, I know generally grocers made, some of them made record profits, has been reported and done stock buyback programs. Do we have a sense how these stores did profit-wise, or these particular chains did profit-wise as a result of COVID? Or these particular chains did profit-wise as a result of COVID? I know we have the general information in the staff report. Sort of as an industry, but.
Yeah, Councilmember, we had the general information, but that's all, we don't have any of the specific information on the specific stores.
Okay, thank you. Two more questions. So do we know how many workers this would apply to? I asked the union if they could pull it, and they were trying to get the information, but they weren't able to get it, as if yet. So I didn't know if we had that information.
No, we don't have the specific number of employees in each store.
Okay. Last question, do we have information on the wages of the workers who would be impacted? Obviously, minimum wage, but does it go up to any amount? Or is it just all hourly workers regardless of how much they make?
It's all hourly workers regardless of how much they make. Again, with the caveat.
Thank you.
The caveat that if there's a voluntary hero pay, then prospectively, the employer gets a credit for that.
Correct. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask those because I got to ask those questions and didn't have the answers. So I'm torn on this as well. I'd like to support it. I support hero pay for frontline essential workers who've put their lives at risk over the past now year. You know, they've continued to work despite all the extra and extended unemployment benefits they could receive, which really kept us alive and our economy from crashing. You know, there's food on our table, emergency services, medical care. They've been honed in businesses, worked in nursing homes, and so much more. My concerns on this policy are several. One is that I think we're targeting just one group of workers who put themselves at risk when there are so many others. And those who worked in groceries, smaller groceries and convenience stores, were put at risk and are not covered. I know at the last meeting, I shared my concerns, so I'll summarize them more quickly this time, and some ideas that I would have liked to have seen brought forward so we could do this in a more equitable way. Retail, including groceries, had the most clusters over the past six months in Riverside County. So we do have that information. We also know there are many other workers who are at even greater risk of dying as a result of COVID, including kitchen workers at restaurants, agricultural workers, to name a few. Other sectors that were open, such as home improvement stores throughout the pandemic, also made record profits and were part of the retail sector, having the most COVID clusters along with grocery stores, but they're not included in this ordinance. So for me, I have a little trouble understanding how we're picking and choosing among what seems to be similarly situated workers. One thing I suggested at our last meeting, and I know we can discuss again, but it wasn't brought back, was that we create a fund to support workers, particularly our Palm Springs residents who work in lower-wage jobs, whether at grocery stores, restaurant kitchens, and other high-risk positions. Many of them work in other cities and then come back here and are really struggling to pay the rent and do other things. And I would like to see us step up as well for them. I also support giving credit in some way to businesses that have been paying bonus and hero pay. Council Mayor Pro Tem Middleton raised that. I do share that purview that we're sending the wrong message if we don't give credit in some form because we want people to do the right thing and not worry that they'll do the right thing and then we're going to jump in. We really want to focus on those who weren't doing the right thing throughout this. I also want to see any financial support for workers really be targeted for those at the lower-wage jobs. And one of my concerns on this is that because it's going forward, instead of giving some kind of bonus or back pay, it could really benefit the workers who could get hired in two weeks from now and not the people, many of whom were out sick or got COVID, who worked during the worst of the pandemic. So for me, I'd like to figure out if there's a way we really can focus this on people who worked through, you know, the worst times, right? November, December, January, and not the people who are necessarily working moving forward. Other issue I want to raise is, you know, we've been working so hard to bring grocery stores to our food deserts. And I am concerned that this is potentially going to make it tougher. That's been raised by some folks, and I just want to share it as just an issue because we know when we try and get a grocery store in an area that has a lower population, they're always hesitant because they won't make as much money, and they don't always want to do that, and we've had trouble getting them to do that. And I just worry that this will make it harder. So those are the things I wanted to raise. So I, you know, I support the overriding goals of the ordinance in helping low-wage essential workers. But I'm concerned that as an emergency ordinance, as it's currently drafted, it just doesn't feel equitable or complete. And I think rather than copy a policy from other cities that has so far resulted in litigation and the potential negative impacts, the unintended consequences, because obviously the intended ones are really good, I'd rather take, you know, a little more time to come up with how we can do this in a more equitable way and get the data that we don't currently have to figure out how to help the most workers with the least negative impacts and unintended consequences. So those are my comments. I look forward to hearing from the rest of the council.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Councilmember Garner.
There's a lot to unpack here. What I'm hearing is that there is a desire from this council to do something for our workers, especially for low-wage workers. I think absolutely there were so many people who have played key roles during this last year. But there is a difference in pay for all of these types of jobs. Some are far better compensated than others. And that's not to diminish their impact or all of the good work that they've done. It's just to say that some people have financially done better than others for, while they've been working through the pandemic. I support this. I support providing funding for hourly workers at grocery stores. I would love to extend that to Home Depot, Lowe's, any of these other big-box stores. I'm happy to include that in this ordinance. I think that there's been a lot of misguided anger about this ordinance. I'm angry, and I'm angry at the businesses that do not pay their workers fairly. And that's all over our country, across all sectors, and it's infuriating. And it is our job as a government to make sure that people are able to have fair wages. I would love to see that be done on the state level, on the federal level. Voting for $15 an hour is not nearly enough. And it's not, definitely not enough in Palm Springs. We are rapidly moving towards being a city that is only for the wealthy. And I reiterated this a million times, but it is impossible to buy a house in Palm Springs right now if you do not make well over six figures. That is unrealistic for the majority of our residents. And we are seeing people constantly moving out because of it. I had the opportunity as the rest of the council to visit with grocery workers this week, and it's been extremely difficult for them, just as it has been for all of us. And they dealt with this at the very beginning in a really big way. Our grocery stores were swamped with people. There was a ton of fear, and they were working, you know, almost 20-hour days for the first few months. So I think that providing hero pay is the least that we can do. And I'm not so concerned with where people live or at what point that they started working because I think this is an issue of, it's a human rights issue. It's an issue of equality, that we really pay people fairly. And we don't do that in this country at all. I'm fine with giving credit for businesses that have already provided hero pay in the equivalent amount that we are requesting today. And I am also in favor of starting a fund for workers that do not fit into this, this ordinance. Restaurant workers who did go months without any work. I would like us to use money that we may get through the federal government, whatever that may be, to do that. I think that's also the least we can do. In terms of our city staff, I do think that we need to have a larger conversation about that. And I'm not sure I'm prepared to have it right now because I think there's a lot of things still on the table that I have questions about, but I would like to address that.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Other council comments?
Mayor?
You don't have to speak, but we might all stare at you and.
You know, a lot has been said, and I agree with a lot that has, most of what's been said. I am very, very torn on this, this particular issue. One, I really don't think it raises the level to an urgency ordinance, and I'd like a little more time to look at it for several of the reasons that have been stated. You know, are we picking and choosing? Are we actually doing that? I think the grocer's letter that they sent to us had some valid points in it that we wanted to consider. And it really brings up the question of what is the role of local government in all of this? And what it comes down to for me is it's about the quality of life of our people that live in our city. And if our citizens and residents are mostly low-paid workers, the quality of life is not going to be as good as if they were higher-paid. And if these are indeed international or national corporations, do they not deserve some sort of pay equity for the sweat that they put in to make these businesses viable? So I am still very torn on the whole thing. And I just really am unclear about what our role is in dictating pay when there's litigation out there with other cities that have done the same thing. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods knows that brevity is a leadership skill, and he displays it. Okay, you know, a lot has been said about this ordinance. I've gone to half a dozen meetings or more with business organizations. Those are the standing committees and business organizations that the city hears from. You know, I've had one chance to talk to workers directly, walking through Ralph's, which is my neighborhood Ralph, and the store that we shop at. And that was really enlightening because we heard from workers in our city who aren't getting paid a living wage, who can't afford to live here or are living here. But we heard people, you know, in living in, you know, higher risk because of COVID because they might be rent burdened and living with others. And we heard people's stories about getting COVID and, you know, having to work through that. We heard stories about people having a lot of additional job duties as a minimum-wage worker and not getting paid more to do more work. And I think it's a city issue to, like Councilmember Woods said, make sure that we have a quality of life where, you know, people can afford to live and work here and the money that they get paid goes into our economy. And I think this is being framed wrong. I think Joe Duffield called in and said that workers and employees are a resource. The people are the resource. We serve them. And the money that they get paid goes into our economy and has a huge economic benefit, regardless of if they live here, because they go across the street to Subway or to, you know, a local restaurant and they eat lunch there, right? And so this has been blown out of proportion in terms of how complicated it is. Grocery workers are very differently situated than other workers in our city. A lot of restaurant workers were, became unemployed during the height of the pandemic. Yes, then they reopened, but they had a lot less exposure, frontline, to people's faces than grocery workers who've been on the clock, working more hours with huge amounts of risk. We know that it's the highest, it was the highest area of COVID spread in our county. And we know that they've had to enforce like masks and other public health requirements. So I don't see what's so complicated about standing with workers who live and work in our community. I hear the concerns and the issues that everyone has raised, but I think our policy interests here are, you know, protecting and assisting low-wage workers. So some of the categories of workers that we're talking about, you know, doctors are on the front line. Police officers are on the front line. A lot of those professions are paid highly compared to if you're getting paid, you know, $14 an hour to bring in carts at Ralph's and you're dealing with the public every single minute of that. So I think our policy interests in the city are pretty clear. I think it's very clearly within the jurisdiction of the city, and I think it's in our best interest as a community because these are multinational corporations that are billionaires that are really exploiting our community and our workers, and it's our job to represent our community. So I very proudly support this ordinance. I'm open to some of the, you know, issues that folks raised. And I also support a fund for other workers because, yes, restaurant workers especially have been impacted by unemployment and by reduced hours and lack of tips, and that's a whole other issue. And there are other categories of workers in our city I think we should support. And I'm glad that we're getting some federal relief finally, a year into this, to actually do some of that work. So I look forward to that work and those policy conversations. But I think the ordinance in front of us is quite simple. And that's why we narrowed the issue, right? That grocery workers are differently situated than the other workers in our city and that this only applies to large multinational corporations that we know have made record profit during this pandemic and we know that they've made record sales in our cities. So that's why this ordinance is narrowed in that way. Councilmember Corz.
Thank you. Two things. I had asked the county, and we did get today a sort of, the clusters, the most clusters. We already, we have in the next staff report, the highest risk of increased risk of death due to COVID by industry in California, and we also have the clusters. So do we have that available just to share with the public and council? Which shows retail, including grocery, was the top category in the county, but it shows the other categories, which I think could be helpful if we do have that available.
Yes, we, we'll see if we do. I know we were trying to get it loaded at the last moment. Aaron, you would have received that from Cindy if you have it.
It'll be just a second.
Okay. While you're doing that, two other things I do want to share because I do agree this is within the city's purview. And I also want to just share that, you know, businesses have asked us to intervene, or as they say, meddle in their private agreements. We heard from a lot of businesses to pass a commercial eviction moratorium and delay payment of back rent. We're still hearing that. Very few cities did it. We did at the business's request. That's interfering with our contracts with the landlords. So we were requested by restaurants to limit how much delivery services could charge. So that's between them and another company. So I just want to share, we are asked to do that to help businesses, and so now we're. And so now we're being asked to do that to help workers. So it is within our purview, and if we can do one, you know, we should be able to consider the other. Separate from my wanting changes in the ordinance, but I do want to share that.
That's why it is ready.
Okay, if you can just show it, just so folks... And it gives us the last six months, which is all the county did. But as you can see, by a large amount, let me see if I can make this big enough so I can actually read it. It was retail, which includes grocery workers, you know, was the number one causes of outbreaks of ten or more. It's not just workers, it's also customers, but obviously it's going to be primarily workers. I can barely read the rest, unfortunately, on this. But I think there's distribution, office space, warehouses, and then restaurants. And then the list of people's most impacted were really the kitchen staff, right? So the line cooks, prep, and dishwashers, who are, many of whom are very low-wage workers. And restaurants are not, even the few that are multinational corporations in our city. Most of them lost a lot of money, and it was a really tough year. And that's the purpose of the fund, which I would hope we could bring back next month. And I'm happy to work with Mayor Holstage on that a little further and what that would look like as the business liaisons, but I'd like to see that. And I think we've shared sort of the other things. I think the credit seemed to be something people supported, adding for people who have done this. And really looking at, you know, the big box stores, which we mentioned, Home Depot, Lowe's, you know, if they made record profits, how does this apply or not apply to them? And, you know, retail workers and some of the other workers don't have the benefit of a union who's advocating for them. And we sometimes have to be that voice as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mayor Protem Middleton?
Thank you. And I appreciate all of the comments that have come from my colleagues. And I recognize that the issue that I raised in terms of our own staff is one that's, has some complexity to it and would require some time. So I'm certainly willing to defer that conversation for a subsequent meeting. And I also recognize there's some wage disparities between the group of individuals we're talking about. I think it's really important that if we're going to impose a burden on others, that we also impose a burden on ourselves. And how we go about doing that is something for us to take and have that discussion. That's the principle behind my raising that issue. I'm pleased to defer that. And I'm very pleased that your support for giving people credit for what they've already paid. What, and like all of us, there's, you're weighing competing interests. Our business community, our grocers are something terribly important to us. And it's particularly important to those of us on City Council because we get stopped in the grocery aisles every time we go to the grocery store by someone who wants to lobby us on a particular position or just make sure that we hear from them. So I want to make sure there's a lot of aisles of groceries or lots of grocery aisles for us to talk to our constituents about. But I'm really taken back, as I weigh all of this, to those faces of the retail clerks that I met at the store and hearing their stories of their family struggles and the struggles that they went through. I want to be able to support those workers. And I want to be really careful as I phrase this. There's some hardball that's going on here. And we all are big kids and we're used to seeing it played. But the veiled threats coming from the grocery industry is not helpful. They closed two stores in Long Beach with great amount of publicity, and both of those stores were already up for sale. So we want to work with the people here. I'm going to stand up very strongly for one of the stores here in town that has voluntarily paid two dollars hero pay for their employees throughout. And they're not one of the stores that is listed on the New York Stock Exchange and had record profits over the last year. They did well. But I will support hero pay if we have a appropriate credit for money paid. And I will support it if we make sure that we do not impose this on our restaurants and retailers that were closed during the COVID.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Garner?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance with Councilmember Middleton's comments regarding credit for money paid and being clear that we won't impose it on businesses that had to close.
Thank you. I'd like to second the motion if I can, and then clarify what we mean in terms of those changes. So the ordinance does include, and we did include in the urgency ordinance, the feedback from council last meeting that we wanted to give credit to companies that were currently paying hero pay already. For example, we heard Jensen say that they're currently paying two dollars an hour. And so it wouldn't be fair to have them pay four dollars on top of that, and we wanted to give them the credit. So that is included in the ordinance if organizations are currently paying. We talked about how to credit, and, you know, it's been sort of haphazard over the last year of when it's been paid and when it's not, and it seems complicated. So Councilmember Middleton, are you okay with the language in the ordinance as written? Or did you want changes to that for that issue?
As I read the ordinance as it was written, I don't think it was clear that we were fully crediting any hero pay already paid. So I think we need to work with staff to make sure that there's a process for determining the dates that someone has, a store has paid it. But my belief is that if you've paid the equivalent of four dollars an hour for 120 days, you're exempt from this.
Thank you. I think that's pretty clear. Sorry to interrupt you on that. Mayor Protem Middleton, did you want to finish your thoughts on that?
And if a store has paid hero pay and it does not equal the equivalent of four dollars an hour for 120 days, and they can provide demonstration of what they did do, then they should be credited for that against their obligation to pay four dollars an hour for 120 days going forward.
And just to clarify, is that...
Councilmember Court?
Is that 120 days during the entire, the last 12 months at any time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
At any...
I was just getting clarification on the same question you asked, so I'm good. Thank you.
So, City Attorney, can you phrase that back to us and let us know if you think that would work in terms of updating the urgency ordinance?
Yeah, so as I understand the proposal, it would add language that would provide that in addition to the prospective credit, an employer who has paid the equivalent of four dollars per hour toward their, to their employees for 120 days during the last, I would recommend maybe, since the emergency, state's emergency declaration, they would, they would be exempt from this ordinance.
How about they will have satisfied the ordinance?
I think that would, that would work. I mean, this ordinance has other, you know, notice and record-keeping requirements in addition to the payment obligation. So we could, we could say they've satisfied all of the requirements of this ordinance.
I appreciate the difference in that word.
Thank you. And then your second item that's included in the motion, can you rephrase that too, and then we'll go through that with the City Attorney to make sure it's okay?
Second item is any store that has previously paid hero pay. But it is not equal to four dollars an hour for 120 days will nonetheless be credited for what they have paid against their obligation going forward.
Councilmember Middleton?
So we had discussed this might be difficult to work out in terms of the language, City Attorney?
So, so would that be a kind of a dollar-for-dollar credit, Councilmember Middleton? Is that what you're thinking?
Dollar in days. So as an example, if someone paid two dollars an hour extra for 30 days, then that counts dollar-for-dollar against four times 120.
Okay, I think I can craft language for that.
And the last point that I was making was that we are clear that, we make it clear that any restaurant or retail operation that was closed as a result of the COVID public health restrictions will not be subject to hero pay being imposed in the future.
And by that, you mean industry, not like if a store had closed because there was an outbreak and they closed for a week? I'm a little concerned about how we would phrase that. You mean industries that are not covered by this ordinance?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion? Councilmember Court?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think this ordinance can just be clear. It only applies, right, to the, as you said, sort of multinational grocery stores and no other industry. That may be the easiest way to have it, so there's no confusion who it could or couldn't. It's just, this is, I mean, I think it says that already, but there's a way to make that clear for the City Attorney to cover Mayor Protem's point. I think that will probably help some businesses that are concerned that this is going to impact those who lost money or, you know, were forced to close by the government. Thank you.
That makes sense. Thank you for the clarification. City Attorney, do you need any other direction?
I did mention, mention earlier today some additional language to deal with the unilateral imposition of collective bargaining agreements. Here's how it would read. Unilateral, and this would be the final sentence to Section 5.87.170. "Unilateral implementation of a collective bargaining agreement shall not constitute a waiver of all or any of the provisions of this ordinance."
Thank you. Councilmember Garner, does that discussion accurately reflect your motion?
Yes.
And you're including the additional language from the City Attorney about collective bargaining?
And just for clarification, is this for the urgency ordinance as well as introduction of the regular ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Holstage?
Yes.
Councilmember Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll read the ordinance titles. "In urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending Palm Springs Municipal Code by adding Chapter 5.87 relating to grocery store workers, I'm sorry, grocery workers in Palm Springs and establishing labor standards and requirements for premium pay for grocery workers working in Palm Springs, as well as in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the Palm Springs Municipal Code by adding Chapter 5.87 relating to grocery workers in Palm Springs and establishing labor standards and requirements for premium pay for grocery workers working in Palm Springs." Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the city clerks for reading that, so I don't have to, too. It's a mouthful. The next item, if the council's ready to continue, or you need a break?
Well, I need to recuse myself from the next item.
I see a request for a break. Is that right?
Yep, if we can. Unless this is a really short item, and then we could give Councilmember Garner a longer break.
Let's, let's take a 10-minute break if we can, and then we'll, we'll come back to that item. And Councilmember Garner will get a longer break. So we will adjourn for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
concern relative to balanced uses. We don't believe that neighboring properties will be impacted by this proposed use as it is located within a commercial and industrial area. But again, there is that issue of saturation. There are not any issues that would impact public health, safety, and welfare, provided the applicant adheres to all conditions of approval and code requirements. In looking at this particular site, there aren't any unique features that would necessarily justify the waiver. In addition, as you're aware, we do have additional criteria that can be taken into consideration in reviewing distance waiver applications. The first of those is relative to blight. This property is beginning to show signs of blight, as indicated in the images in your package. The proposal would restore the building back to its original condition. In terms of the vacancy of the space, there was a tenant in the front building of this property in early 2020, but they left that space and relocated elsewhere in the city of Palm Springs. The remainder of the building has been vacant for an extended period. In terms of the number of dispensaries along the same block frontage, there is only one dispensary on the same block frontage, as I had indicated. There is a second dispensary within 500 feet on Industrial Place, but they are not visible from one another, nor do they have a direct connection to one another. The hours of operation of this business will be generally compatible with adjacent businesses. As I had earlier indicated, this is in a commercial and industrial area. So it is not anticipated that there would be impacts to the adjacent businesses. And then finally, the applicant is not in the social equity program, so they would not qualify for that criterion. So with that, that concludes my presentation to you in terms of the distance.
Okay, we are back from our recess. And the next item is item 5A, consideration of an administrative minor modification for relief from the minimum separation distance requirements for cannabis dispensary and a minor architectural application for the exterior modifications to the proposed cannabis facility located at 577 East Sunny Dunes Road. We can have a staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, before the staff report, I just want to, for anybody who wasn't here before, Councilmember Garner recused herself, and she's in a waiting room. She left before the break, and will return after this item's over.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the item before you is a request for a distance waiver from the separation requirements that apply to cannabis facilities. By way of background, the application is for a 1,200-square-foot dispensary that will be located in an existing commercial building. The applicant came before the city council back in November of last year with a request for approval of a distance waiver. At that point in time, the city council determined that they would prefer to have action on the architectural improvements to the building prior to considering the distance waiver. And so the applicant submitted their plans and elevations to the Department of Planning. The plans were forwarded to the Architectural Advisory Committee. The Architectural Advisory Committee reviewed those improvements in February and approved the architectural package for the dispensary with conditions of approval relative to screening of mechanical equipment, the use of clear glazing at the front, repairs to the parking lot, and conditions relative to lighting and signage for the facility. The plans for the facility will include the restoration of the building, as was indicated under public comment earlier this evening. It was designed by Howard Lappam. The architect is proposing to restore the building back to, much to its original appearance, and also to clean up the property in terms of repairs to the parking lot. And then we'll also add landscaping in the buffer areas at the perimeter of the site as well. In terms of the distant separation waiver, there are two existing facilities that are within 500 feet. One is located just immediately to the west on Sunny Dunes Road. Another is located to the southeast of the subject site and is on Industrial Place. So the one on Industrial Place does not front on the same street as the others, and so consequently, that issue should be taken into consideration. Also, it should be noted that the dispensary and lounge on Industrial Place has not yet opened, but does have an administrative permit and is going through the process of doing a redesign of the facility. There is a third application, which is located immediately to the east of the site, but an administrative permit has not been issued for that business yet. And so consequently, we should only consider the two approved facilities in terms of the distance waiver. In looking at the criteria that is established for distance waivers, first of all, the use is permitted by the zoning upon approval of the distance waiver. One of the issues that should be taken into consideration is that our general plan does speak about a balance of uses, and with two other dispensaries within 500 feet, that may be an issue for concern relative to balanced uses. We don't believe that neighboring properties will be impacted by this proposed use, as it is located within a commercial and industrial area. But again, there is that issue of saturation. There are not any issues that would impact public health, safety, and welfare, provided the applicant adheres to all conditions of approval and code requirements. In looking at this particular site, there aren't any unique features that would necessarily justify the waiver. In addition, as you're aware, we do have additional criteria that can be taken into consideration in reviewing distance waiver applications. The first of those is relative to blight. This property is beginning to show signs of blight, as indicated in the images in your package. The proposal would restore the building back to its original condition. In terms of the vacancy of the space, there was a tenant in the front building of this property in early 2020, but they left that space and relocated elsewhere in the city of Palm Springs. The remainder of the building has been vacant for an extended period. In terms of the number of dispensaries along the same block frontage, there is only one dispensary on the same block frontage, as I had indicated. There is a second dispensary within 500 feet on Industrial Place, but they are not visible from one another, nor do they have a direct connection to one another. The hours of operation of this business will be generally compatible with adjacent businesses. As I had earlier indicated, this is in a commercial and industrial area, so it is not anticipated that there would be impacts to the adjacent businesses. And then finally, the applicant is not in the social equity program, so they would not qualify for that criterion. So with that, that concludes my presentation to you in terms of the distance findings. We have resolutions, both approving or denying, depending on your findings this evening, relative to the distance waiver. We are recommending approval of the architectural review package, as has the Architectural Advisory Committee. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have relative to this application.
Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, just a couple of questions off the bat. Just want to confirm, so they bought the building, after checking with the city, at a time when they were allowed to build here?
Correct. The distant separation requirements did not previously apply in industrial districts until the amendment to our cannabis ordinance in late 2019.
Two is, I didn't get any comments from the public in opposition, and I saw we did notice. Were there any? I didn't, actually, I know there's some in the back, some stuff in the back of the staff board. I didn't hear from the other cannabis businesses. I saw some support left, some support, but I really didn't see anything that was opposed. So there was outreach to all those, right, if they were that close?
That is correct. We do a mailed notice on the distance waiver applications within 500 feet, and did not receive any comments back, from what I recall.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Woods, and then Mayor Portman-Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Flynn, you know, there's, they have, on the plans that you gave us, thank you for the plans very much, they have the building in the rear, it's called "not apart," but yet on the renderings, they show that building being greatly improved. Are they improving the building in the back as well?
Per the plans that were submitted to the Architectural Advisory Committee, they will be doing the facade improvements and restoration of the facade, removal of some of the additional mechanical equipment, et cetera. But it's not intended that those spaces will be occupied by the cannabis business at this time.
So you're talking about the "not apart" will be improved?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Flynn, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Flynn, have we had this situation arrive previously where someone had purchased a property for cannabis use in an industrial zone and then encountered a subsequently imposed distance requirement?
I can think of two other businesses where that has occurred. One of them has not come before you yet, but yes, that has been a situation that we have dealt with since we made modifications to our ordinance.
How did we deal with it in the previous instance?
In the previous instance, we did go through the process of the distance waiver, and it was brought forward to city council and addressed at the city council level. As I had mentioned, there is one more that would be coming forward to you for a distance waiver.
So did we approve the facility in the previous instance?
Yes, you did.
All right, thank you. That's my only question, and I'll have comments when it's that time.
Thank you. So this is the building that Bones and Stones had been in for a long time, is that right?
That is correct, before they relocated.
So I have a larger question that isn't about this application, so tell me if we should talk about it now, or just hold it for another agenda item. But how do we deal with prospective cannabis businesses? We see this a lot. This is a policy problem that we're facing. Perspective cannabis businesses are coming in and then closing existing businesses in the site in hopes that they'll get approved, and then the city council sort of faced with a difficult decision where we do have an empty building now, even though we had other tenants. And obviously, we don't control what tenants are, you know, private landlords decide to rent to. However, we have successful businesses that are being pushed out of these areas in hopes that, you know, a prospective cannabis business can go there. So how is a policy, and then it comes to us, and it's very late in the game, and, you know, there's no overall policy. So do you want to, can we talk about that now, or do you want to talk about it in a larger context later?
Well, Mayor, I would just offer a comment that ultimately, because that is a potential real concern that you can see coming, and the ultimate remedy for that is a moratorium for some period of time, until there's a longer policy decision on what that is made. We've done that in the past for these kinds of situations in other areas, of course, but that is one remedy. And I'll let the Planning Director speak about other possibilities, and also the city attorney.
In the instance where a cannabis business would require a distance waiver, one of the things that you all as city council have done is to add a criterion in the additional criteria that we consider is relative to how long has the tenant space been vacant, and were other businesses there in place, and basically, their lease is terminated so the cannabis business could come in. So in this particular instance, you can consider that as one of the criterion as to whether or not this distance waiver should be approved. In other situations where there isn't a requirement for a distance waiver, that becomes a little bit more problematic. But do be aware that we, as staff, when we meet with applicants as they're discussing potential locations, we advise them upfront whether or not a distance waiver would be required, and indicate to them that, you know, this is not something that the city council or that staff can guarantee that the distance waiver is going to be approved. It's a discretionary process. We look at the potential impacts. We look at saturation issues. So when we do have people come forward asking about a location, we try and advise them accordingly.
Thank you. I just don't think that those policy solutions are sufficient for the scope of the problem that we're seeing, because then we get hardship arguments at the end, that, you know, they purchased this building, they've made different promises, you know, they've expended X amount of time and money, and it's on the back end and not the front end. So I'm wondering what we do to deal with that front-end problem.
If I can, Mayor, just on that point, do we know that Bones and Stones was evicted by the new owners? Flynn?
I don't know specifically if they were evicted by the new owners of the building. We do have the building permit his, sorry, the business license history showing that they left in early 2020, but we don't have the situation surrounding that in terms of if the new owner terminated their lease.
So I agree with Mayor Holst, maybe the cannabis liaisons couldn't think about something, right? Because it is, we don't want existing businesses vacated and then give a distance waiver. I think that was one of the policy things we had really talked about, moving forward at least, so maybe we come up with a rule on that.
Thank you. That would be great if the subcommittee could take a look at that, because I continue to have the position that this process doesn't make a lot of sense. It doesn't allow us to set the large-scale policy of how many cannabis businesses we want in certain areas of the city, and defining what overconcentration means. And so I'm concerned that that's happening at a really large-scale level, and we see it all the time, a lot of these projects. So it's not particular to this project, but I do think it's an issue that we need to address, and pretty quickly, because we are, you know, losing good storefrontage in a lot of different areas, just for prospective businesses that might not be approved by city council. So, okay, sorry to derail the conversation on that, but I thought that was important to raise now. Is there other discussion by city council? Or motion, or other action? Mayor Portman-Middleton?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for raising the issue that you've raised. It's one that I've talked about in the past, and I would be very pleased to see us have a discussion around an ordinance that would prohibit an eviction or a non-renewal of a lease in order to lease to a cannabis facility. I continue to be concerned that this industry is over-concentrated in our city, and that it's one that's heading for a very significant reckoning, because there are just simply more facilities than what the market can sustain over a long period of time. That said, I've voted no on an awful lot of these, and I'm going to make a motion to approve this one. I think it's consistent with what we did in the past under similar circumstances. We have no opposition to it. The architecture is really good, and it restores to life a building that is an important one within our community. And lastly, since this is my district, the Sunny Dunes Business District is one of those areas where we've had success and we've had struggles. And I think this facility promises to be a potentially really good addition to that important commercial area, so I'm going to move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wood?
I, thank you very much for making that motion, Mayor Portman. I would agree that, and I've had no, I want to disclose, I've had no interaction with this applicant whatsoever at all, nor have I had any interaction with the neighbors at all. So I can only take what's in the record as making my decision. But they did come before us once before, and we sent them to AAC to improve the building, and I think that in itself is somewhat of a, we are working with you to get this approved. And I think what they're trying to do to the building is absolutely what's needed for the Sunny Dunes Business District back there. I think, and even if they're not a success and there's oversaturation, we're left with a great building for someone else to move into. And even the "not apart" in the back could be something that somebody could move into. So I fully support this as well.
Thank you. And before we vote, if I can, just ask staff, in terms of the city manager's recommendation, maybe the, maybe the subcommittee on cannabis and city staff can work on just bringing forward to city council, how many applications are pending right now? How many were, you know, coming forward before we changed the rules for industrial? You know, how many more would we grandfather in? And then we can have a larger discussion about policy, if that works. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Portman-Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holst?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one, I'm sorry, four to zero, with Councilmember Garner recused.
Thank you. We will let Councilmember Garner back in to the meeting. Hello. The next item is item 5B, discussion of the county homelessness program. We can have a staff report, please. I believe we have a few speakers tonight on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The purpose of this item that was on is, last week, the chief had talked about the county programs and Palm Springs hotels. You had asked us to get some more information and actually meet with the staff and supervisor. We had a meeting last Friday, so we did want to report out and tell you the progress of that meeting. Also, in addition, what we wanted to do is, and the mayor had requested this, to, it might be appropriate if we had a presentation from SEVAG on their Housing First program. And so what we wanted to do is start with Tom Kirk, the director, executive director of SEVAG, on that program. He has a presentation, and Aaron, if you could allow him to join us on Zoom, he'll begin the presentation, and then the police chief will discuss the situation he brought up last week, and we will give you an update on that meeting with the county. So with that, I would like to invite Tom Kirk to begin his presentation.
Thank you. And if I can, really quickly on context, because I also service the chair of our SEVAG homelessness committee, and get to the work with Tom Kirk and Tom Cox on this important project. So we wanted to have an item on homelessness. There's, you know, different entities that are doing work on homelessness, so we all regionally collaborate. So one, there's everything that the city has done. Two, there's this amazing Housing First program through SEVAG that we have jointly funded. And then three, there's a county effort. So we wanted to separate those all out and then have a larger conversation. So thank you to Tom and Tom for being here today and all of your work.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chair of SEVAG's Homeless Committee. And you've already introduced Tom Cox, who will share this presentation with me. And it is the mayor's fault that we're here, along with Councilman Coors. A few weeks ago, the two of them asked Tom and I, and Greg Rodriguez, and a few others to sit down with the police chief and talk about how our programs all related to one another, and who is doing what. And frankly, I didn't do a very good job of explaining how our program related to the other programs. So I spent the last few weeks trying to organize in my own mind how our program related to other programs, and let me share with you my thoughts and where we are with CB200. Let me give you a little background on SEVAG's homelessness efforts, talk about what CB200 is, how our program relates to other programs, particularly shelters, and where we're headed next. Just to remind you all, the same conversations you're having about homelessness being concentrated in Palm Springs, those same conversations occurred in India 12 years ago, with most of the county services concentrated in India, the shelters concentrated in India, and frankly, homeless populations concentrated there as well. And as a result, under the leadership of the late supervisor Roy Wilson and others, Roy's was established in North Palm Springs. 120 beds, a overnight shelter, and we operated it through Jewish Family Services of the desert. And we helped thousands of people at Roy's. It did its job. But there is at least one challenge out there, and that is transportation. We spent about a third of the budget at Roy's, just getting people to and from Roy's. It wasn't on a bus line. We spent a lot of money on shuttle service. And Jewish Family Services in 2017 said, "So long." They didn't want to continue the relationship. And at the same time, the county said that they'd like to use that facility for a long-term mental health facility. 90 beds opened in August. So in 2017, we closed the door to Roy's and opened the door to a new concept for the Coachella Valley called Housing First. We retained Path of Life Ministries out of Riverside to operate the program for three years. And in 2018, the Desert Healthcare District weighed in with a report authored by Barbara Poppy. And in that report, we really started focusing in on what are our target populations, and how do we spend our limited resources? What is Housing First? Well, whether you are a chronically homeless client, somebody who recently had some bad luck with health, or perhaps employment, and are now on the streets... luck with health or perhaps employment and are now on the streets, or a family in need, the notion of Housing First is get the client under a roof first. Don't ask questions, offer them a roof over their head, and then surround them with wraparound services. Help with jobs and documentation, help with drug and alcohol abuse, help with their mental health problems, or even help with their criminal issues. And when you think about it, at Roy's, we kind of did the exact opposite. We said if you had a major drug problem or alcohol problem, we weren't going to let you in. And if you had a mental health problem, we're not going to let you in. And guess what? Of course, if you had a major criminal background, violent, a violent background in particular, we didn't want you in there with the other hundred clients. So who did we let in? Certainly families, and certainly the recently homeless, but we didn't let in the chronically homeless. And guess what? Uh, they're still on the street. They've been on the street for years, and they may be on the street for another few years if we don't focus our attention on them. Now, the chronically homeless, even if we allowed them to come into those shelter systems, many of them say no. They don't want to be in that kind of environment. And yet, it's the chronically homeless that are taking a lot of Chief Reyes' time and his, his staff. They're certainly taking up a lot of time and space at our hospitals. And they're the ones that you're going to get complaints of. Uh, they're the ones in front of stores, behind stores. Your tourist, uh, your residents are complaining about the chronically homeless every day in Palm Springs. You know that. I could have put any one of your photos up. I'm using your colleague to the east, Mark Carnivali, who's a business owner, and he called me and Tom Cox up regularly and saying, "What about the chronically homeless? We understand you have a program, but what about the guy out there muttering to himself?" And I keep saying "guy" because most of them are. The guy out there muttering to himself and causing perhaps property damage. So, uh, we stopped the contract with Path of Life Ministries at the end of, uh, 2020, and we started an in-house program led by Tom Cox along with some staff. And Tom, uh, thought we were going to start with a CV 100 list, and I'll explain what that list means in a minute. Clearly, when he started knocking on the doors of your police chief and his staff and went across the entire Coachella Valley, unfortunately, that list grew, and you could imagine why. There aren't just 100 chronically homeless people in the Coachella Valley. There are 200 or more. We started with a CV 200, those frequent flyers of public services. And January 1st, we have a by-name list. By-name list of 200 people in the Coachella Valley that we plan on targeting, focusing our efforts, getting them off the street and getting them help. This is our team. Anise Smith works for Tom. Stephanie and Ivan, you might see them on the street, helping people get out of homelessness. Forty days in, uh, these results are frankly too good to be believed, and I want to caution all of us. One reason they're so good is it's really a continuation, a continuation of our homeless program started under Path of Life. There are really two ways the staff report mentions that we help people. One is rapid resolution. This is the easy stuff. Uh, perhaps we could fix somebody's car or provide first or last month's rent. It's cheap and relatively easy. Tom Cox, can you share with the council this woman's story?
Yes. This is Mrs. P. She's on the CV 200 list, or was on the CV 200 list. She was living in her car for three years until it was repossessed. Uh, Mrs. P was unable to make the payments on a fixed income, so we used our rapid resolution funding, and we put, we got her car back, we paid her deposit and first month's rent, and she was able to move into her senior low-income apartment.
Thank you, Tom. So we've helped three people off the list in that, that 40 days. That's a big deal. The bigger part of our program is called Crisis Stabilization Units. I still don't like the term. They're really apartments. Most of our units, we have about 20 units throughout the Coachella Valley, and we use them as a part of that Housing First, First methodology. Somebody that was resistant to going to a shelter or a shelter was resistant to having them, when you approach them in the street and say, "Hey, we will provide an apartment to you for up to 90 days. No questions asked, no conditions. We will accept your pets, your partners, and your property." Imagine that. We certainly didn't do mo- most of that at Roy's. And we've helped 16 people off of the list in the first 40 days. Tom, another story, please.
Yeah, this is Mr. H. He was also on the CV 200. He was a veteran and was homeless for 40 years. He was in our Crisis Stabilization Unit until we were able to finish his veteran pa- paperwork, and we were also able to move him into his senior low-income apartment last month.
We have one other, uh, success story that's not, and, and this is one where we just had a hard time categorizing. Somebody died, and that's certainly not the way we want people to exit from homelessness, but it reminds us of the fragile condition of many of these chronically homeless. And had we gotten to this person perhaps sooner and helped them sooner, maybe they could have been a success story rather than an other category. So, all in, 20 people off of our list of 200 in 40 days. And I share this because homelessness seems like an impossible thing for us to solve. It's not. It does take a lot of work, a lot of diligence, and good people like Tom and the rest of the team doing it. So, uh, how does this fit in? Uh, thank you, Councilman Coors. We actually heard your, your applause. Uh, CV 200, how, how does this differ from the shelter system? It's not one or the other, it's both. Uh, shelters do do a fantastic job of helping many of the recently homeless, certainly families. For the chronically homeless, I believe Housing First is the way to go. And I've got to be honest, we are only, only going to help perhaps 80 or 90 people this year. I hope, hopeful that it's more than that. The shelters will help thousands. And our budget, we focus a lot on our budget. Thank you, Palm Springs, for continuing to support the regional program. You contribute $100,000 a year into this. Desert Healthcare District's been contributing as well, but our budget is small in comparison to the shelter budgets. They're probably five to six times larger each. And cost per client, guess what? When you put one person in an apartment and then surround them with services, it's expensive. And I point all that out, and I want to remind all of us that the cost to society of the chronically homeless is off the chart. Those are the people that are costing our police, our emergency personnel, our hospitals, uh, your time and effort. By far, uh, these are the folks that are costing society. The Desert Fund did an analysis of our Housing First and homeless programs a couple of years ago, and I want to point out, uh, shelters help thousands of people, but they don't necessarily get them out of homelessness. And we speak, uh, from knowing this firsthand at Roy's and operating the cooling centers. We are certainly helping people temporarily, but it's a bit of a revolving door. We were at 5% at Roy's, thereabouts, people that were helped out of homelessness. The Housing First program that we've been operating for a few years is at 65%. And remember, the client we're helping, these are the most challenging people out there. So looking forward, we're obviously going to build on our success. Every time we move somebody out of one of our units and into permanent housing, we've got a unit available, and we're going to put somebody else in that unit. We want to get them in and out of that unit in under 90 days. Uh, I've challenged Tom to do it in under 45 days. You'll see that there are two empty houses at the bottom of the little stream. Uh, that is because the world is not perfect, even though I've, uh, encouraged Tom to believe it is. Sometimes we help people that aren't on our list, and you can imagine. Uh, your police chief may call up and say, "Well, uh, we have somebody that really fits the chronically home- homeless definition, but we didn't put them on the list." We certainly will help. Tom, uh, this gentleman, I believe, is in one of our units today. Who is he?
Yeah, this is, uh, M. He is currently, um, receiving services and case management. We're, uh, assisting him on his permanent housing. We're working with the county's H-Hope team, and we actually worked with, uh, Palm Desert Sheriff's Department, and, uh, things are looking up for M. He is about ready to get his voucher, so we're just getting him ready for his permanent housing.
And this couple, Tom?
This couple, uh, were living in their car on the streets of Indio. Both were unemployed. Uh, we moved them into a Crisis Stabilization Unit about 30 days ago. They are both working, and so now we've, uh, shifted the case manager from Employment Services to Housing Locations. So we're trying to help them find a place that we can help move them in so they are no longer homeless.
So, again, we're moving people in and out of these apartments and putting them into permanent housing or getting them reconnected with family or whatever it takes to get them off the streets and out of the radar of both tourists and the public, and frankly, uh, take a burden off of your police services. Mobile Access Center, we received a $250,000 HHAP grant, and we're going to convert this bus, which Seavag owns, unfortunately, into this bus. It's going to be a mobile access center because, as you can imagine, uh, as wonderful as the boxing center is, and thank you for your partnership on that, City of Palm Springs, we need to be out in the field and moving around. And we're going to have two additional full-time employees thanks to this grant. We're going to be out there in encampments, addressing street outreach. We're also working with the Desert Healthcare District. Uh, we had a fantastic meeting with their program committee. There is a recommendation moving forward for substantial funding again this year, and what we're going to really focus our efforts with their money is the frequent flyers going to hospitals and medical services. And we know there's an overlap. Those people that your police are see- saying are often the same people that are in emergency rooms on minor issues, because that's the only health, uh, that's the only health management service they could take advantage of. So we're working with all three hospitals, and we can't do quite the same thing with the hospitals as we do with your police. We can't get names specifically because of privacy matters, but we can create referral systems, and we're going to be doing that. We're going to increase rapid resolution coming out of hospitals, discharge planning, and respite care. So, next steps, uh, we are going to build on our early success. I think most of you know, uh, I was hoping that Seavag would not be in this business, but we are because it's such, such a critically important thing that we do. Thank you again for your contribution. I'm hopeful we're going to get contributions from every city this year, and, uh, the mayor has been, uh, forceful and, and, uh, and a positive, uh, really a positive force on the, on the homeless committee, and I suspect, uh, we're going to get, if not everybody, maybe all but one city to contribute. We received that grant for the Mobile Access Center, and we're going to expand and target our efforts to help the hospitals relieve the burden that they share. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have, and Greg Rodriguez is with us, who certainly could address things related to our program but also the county programs. And I know there's a lot of concern with the city and what the county is and isn't doing, or maybe what Seavag is and isn't doing. Uh, hopefully, this presentation shares with you that real people are being helped off your streets every day, and I'm hopeful that there are going to be many more over the course of the year. Mayor and Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. That's the third time I've seen your presentation, and it's still good, so that's saying something. I appreciate your work and, and that excellent presentation. I think it really clarifies for the community what the work has been, um, and all the progress that we've made. Are there questions for Tom and Tom about Seavag's, um, Housing First program or the CV 200 work? Councilmember Garner and then Mayor Portman Middleton.
Thanks, Tom. I really appreciate that presentation as well. Um, you mentioned the crisis stabilization housing and then moving them into more permanent housing. Um, what is, when someone moved into more permanent housing, then who's paying for that apartment? Are you setting them up with the ability to pay on their own? From some of the stories, it sounded like maybe that wasn't the case. I just want to get a better understanding of, of what that cost is.
Uh, Tom Cox, you want to answer that?
Yeah, that. Some of the subsidy, subsidies, uh, it's rental by client, so a lot of them are paying their own rent. Others are rental with a subsidy. They might have a voucher, and so they're paying a percentage of their income. But, uh, those are the two main categories that we're, uh, dealing with.
And Councilwoman Gardner, uh, one of the things we looked at a couple of years ago with Hark, a, a nonprofit here in the desert, is, uh, what was the income of those in Housing First when we first encountered them, and what is their income 90 days later? And the average income, by my recollection, of those that we meet on the street is about $500 a month. They do get benefits. After we spend time with them, their average income is $1,500 a month, and I wish I could tell you that every one of those is out there in the workforce. In many cases, we're just making them avail, making them aware of benefits that they are eligible for, and that allows them to pay for their own housing. So, uh, we, we do a handoff. We cannot, obviously, under our modest program, pay for somebody's housing for the rest of their lives. They have to be able to do that.
I, i- if I may add on there, when Tom Cox speaks about vouchers too, there's an, a plethora of vouchers, so we can talk about vast vouchers for veterans. Um, we can talk about not only the Section 8 vouchers, but also behavioral health department vouchers, all of those programs that the county administers, that we work in close relationships with Seavag to make sure that as we exit people into permanent supportive housing, that they're getting the right support that they need. The key element, though, is that what we're trying to do is make sure that those that don't qualify for those vouchers have some type of workforce and connection to workforce development, so that they're able to provide their own income, um, to pay for their rent.
Right. So just to, one more clarification, so no one is being put into these housing and then after 90 days left on their own? This is, there's 100% putting them into long-term housing?
Well, uh, Tom, Tom Cox and Greg Rodriguez will nod affirmatively, and I'm the mean-spirited one here. If they are not willing to help themselves, and these are the chronically homeless, we are not going to be 100% successful. Some of them will leave our Crisis Stabilization Unit on their own accord and say, "I want to be back on the street," or "I want to be back doing drugs," or "I want, uh, to reconnect with X or Y." We are not going to be 100% successful, and we are also not going to allow somebody to stay more than 90 days. They then become a tenant, and they stop the flow of clients coming through the system. So we have to be okay with some failure in order to make this system work.
Sure. No, I understand that aspect of it. I guess my thing is, is are there some, is there some sort of benefit that everyone potentially could get? Or are there people who could possibly have not qualified for any benefits, not be able to work? You know, I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the system.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, I, I think a lot of people are starting at different places. Some have income, some don't. Um, it's amazing when we do outreach and the- It's amazing when we do outreach in the Coachella Valley, if someone does not have an ID, they are set back so far because they can't get a cell phone, they can't get medical insurance. And so even just a simple ID, so, you know, that's one of our goals, is we have the free ID vouchers, and we sign up people, and that's the, that's like the start. But, you know, then we have other people that are, they have all their documentation, and they have their voucher, and some are just farther along. You know, the case management aspect, we're going to come alongside them and help them with what they need, but we're also going to push them a little bit to where they need to be. And, you know, everybody's at different places. And even tomorrow, we had, we have a couple that's turned down three units with a voucher. And we're going to have to say, you're going to have to move on, because we provided three different opportunities for them. And don't tell Tom Kirk that they're actually over their 90 days, but we tried our best to do what we could for them.
Got it. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tom and Tom and Greg, thank you for all of the work that you've done. And I think what, what we've been hearing about over the last few minutes is the kind of program that Palm Springs has participated in, supported, believed in, advocated for, and that's not what we were talking about two weeks ago. And if we are going to move forward, we know we're going to need the cooperation of everyone. Approximately how many apartments and housing units do you have across the Coachella Valley that are active in the Housing First program?
Twenty.
Twenty? How many of those are in the city of Palm Springs?
Tom?
Currently, we have two.
So two out of 20?
Yes.
That's, that's refreshing to those in our community who are convinced that we're carrying a sizably disproportionate share of the load, because we've always been willing to share our share, and even then some, but not everybody's share. You said that you were confident that almost every city in the Coachella Valley would participate in funding of this program and...
Yeah. And they have been. Last year, we had every city but Indian Wells participate.
All right. So we're hearing an example of what works. When you talk about surrounding someone with services, could you describe for me what that actually looks like? We get an individual who's chronically homeless, we get them into a room, they've got a roof over their head, they've got kinds of facilities in the bathroom that absolutely every single human being needs and deserves. What happens next?
Tom?
Yeah, and I think that, I don't think we can pass over the restoring someone's dignity back to them. You know, having those toiletries, having a roof over your head, having a means to have a cold glass of water on a hot day. Those are things, and even clothes, and, you know, we provide them money to do laundry and those things. But after that initial week, it's really a culture shock for them. We come in with our case management team, and we work, you know, with housing stability, so we got to get them ready for housing. So how do you be a good neighbor? So we come alongside them, you know, don't play your music too loud, don't have your friends over, you know, so we're role modeling and we're teaching them how to do this. But then there's other aspects. Medically, some of them have never taken care of themselves, and so we have to hold them by the hand and take them to the doctor, or even get their medical insurance. And then, you know, so then, the housing part, we're, you know, when they're ready, we're taking them out. If income is a part of that, we're, hey, let's help you with your resume, let's help you apply for this job. And sometimes others get it faster, you know, but in the success, since everybody's starting at those different places, you know, it's kind of a variety of who gets where, and, you know, sometimes the ones that I think that aren't going to make it, they make it. And, you know, so that just shows me we can't give up on them, and we have to give them the case management and the support that they're due.
If I can add on there, too, and this is where the handoff to the county goes a lot, too, is that you talk about complete wraparound services. So back to Tom Cox's earlier point about every case is different, and every individual is different. So there's intake that looks at mental health needs, substance use needs, healthcare needs, like Tom mentioned. And so this is where we tap into our county federally qualified healthcare systems, how our behavioral health gets involved, that are already out as outreach teams, our substance use treatment, which is, you know, Haralbit is one of the best as far as peer support and all that goes in the nation. And so it really is, to your point, Councilmember Middleton, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, that it really is, to your point, that wraparound services. And that's not a role that just CV Housing First can play, and that's been the beauty of what we've done in the valley here, is the collaborative effort that we have tapped into, whether it's CV Housing First, our shelter support systems on the East Valley, the county apparatus and homeless services. And so that, that really is how we're addressing this, to get to your point about really treating the individual as a whole person, and how we move through that continuum of care.
All right. Incredibly labor-intensive. So, which makes it an expensive program to carry out. Twenty apartment units is not very many. Are all 20 in one location, or are they spread out in larger complexes?
They're spread out.
So, the, how's the apartment that a homeless individual is staying in is probably surrounded by others that are either on supported or market-rate apartments?
Both.
Okay.
And sometimes permanent housing may result in the same complex. These clients sometimes prove themselves to be wonderful tenants.
Is it more effective to have them in units where there's the diversity of individuals that are present?
You'll see Greg and Tom are nodding affirmatively.
Yeah. So, so two things here. Yes, and this goes about any type of housing, is, you know, we talk about isolating or gentrifying, but, you know, public housing in certain areas, where we should really do more inclusive housing. That's exactly the same thing we should be doing with people that are going to permanent supportive housing, because it gives them the impetus to actually make them feel good about advancing their own lifestyles. But I will say that when we're dealing with individuals that may have been just recently removed from the street, if you look at more group-type environments, and I've done a couple of conversations this week that have been fascinating about, and they call them PODs, but it's basically individual rooms that have a common kitchen, common living room. The advantage to that is that when you're doing the case management, to your point, Lisa, is the high, the amount of staff time that it takes to do that is that if we can have six to eight people in a really close locale, whether that's in one unit or within, you know, a unit within a complex, the efficiency to do that case management is much better, too. So there's, again, this gets to the level of acuity that you're dealing with in homelessness and housing, which is just like healthcare, is that every step is different in the level of staff time, resources that it takes to do.
I asked the questions I need to ask for now, but I know this is going to be a longer conversation, and not every program we're going to talk about tonight is quite as successful as this one.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Coors?
All right. Thank you, and thank you all for your work, and it's great to see the success since you took this internal, and the kind of accountability that we're seeing in this. And getting these reports, whether in a presentation form or even in writing quarterly, would be really helpful, I think, for us in residence to know that we're really seeing, you know, ending homelessness. That is the goal here, right, to the extent we can for folks, and that's what this is doing. So, I know we're going to want to pivot to sort of hotels being used, which doesn't have the same result, for some people maybe, but we should talk about that next. But before we end this, it strikes me that one of the real issues we're going to face is, we do this more and more, you know, if someone's getting $1,000 a month, right, from 415 ideally, which is hard to pay for an apartment and food and everything that goes with it. So just the need for more of those units, I'm not putting that on Sebag to figure that out, but, you know, really focusing on that and how we're going to work with the state and county to get those units. Because I don't mind a disproportionate number of people who are exiting into permanent housing. It's more the people who aren't that we have some concerns with tonight. So, I really do appreciate that work. If anyone has anything on this, but, you know, I know we have some other subjects we want to get to, and I want to be respectful to Tom and Tom, who are just doing the Sebag part. Greg has lots of parts.
I know, and Greg, I apologize, I didn't say hi to you and introduce you at the beginning. You weren't on my Brady Bunch screen. So we know that you're doing important work with the Sebag program, as well as the chair for the continuum of care for our region, so thank you. And as in your role for the supervisor's office, you wear many hats. Are there other discussion, you know, items from council about the Sebag program in the presentation? Any other questions? Councilmember Wood?
Are you muted?
I'm muted. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I'm understanding correctly, CV200 is about really making the connections, meeting the people, finding out who they are, and then CV Housing First is about putting them into housing. Is that correct? Is that a synopsis? Yes, and they're one and the same. CV200 is a housing-first type program, and we have, the CV200 is a by-name list. Those are the 200 people Tom and his team are going to focus on this year, and there will certainly be some additions along the way, but we want those 200 people to be off the street, and we're using a housing-first methodology to do so.
And to farm those names, you know, to get those names of those people, you're using things like the boxing club and well in the desert, I'm not sure how you're farming the names.
Tom Cox spent his first 30 days in the in-house operation, meeting with your staff. It's your police, it's the sheriff, it's the hospital administrators to some extent, but much less so, but it is city and county personnel that put the list together for us. The names from Palm Springs are from Palm Springs staff. Great. Thank you very much.
Other questions? I want to applaud you for your work and our work together, and one thing that you didn't share in that story is the funding story, that only a few cities, even though the cities had agreed to fund Roy's in partnership, only a few cities, including the city of Palm Springs, committed to that year after year, and we've gotten to a place now where, like you said, eight out of the nine cities are contributing to this regional program that we know is effective, that is getting results, that is housing people, that the desert sun independently found is the most effective in terms of housing programs in the valley. And the ninth city contributes to homelessness as well in different ways, and we're hoping that we'll have all nine cities, as well as the Desert Healthcare District, as well as the county has jointly funded this program. So really is a model for regional success. It's one of the best models, I think, in the state, and we hear that through the supervisor's work on the state task force. So I'm glad that we brought it internally, too, and I do agree that as much as we can, you know, share this information with the public, because I think our Palm Springs residents truly have no idea that we're housing people every week from the streets of Palm Springs, right, into housing. So my last question would be, how can the city better support this program? I know that we, you said that there's only two units in Palm Springs. I think that's because of the rent is so high in Palm Springs, that it's difficult to afford that for the program. I know that we've tried to do regional efforts in terms of increasing the number of units, since we know this program is successful. We before had a call to cities to help contribute units. So you can answer that now in terms of how the city can best support these efforts and make sure that we continue to house people and get them services.
The easy, the expected answer is more money, and I'm not going to give you that answer. I believe what we ought to do is prove ourselves. Let's see how this program operates over six months or 12 months, and then reassess the program. We continue to improve as we go, and at one point along the way, we may need more crisis stabilization units. And Mayor Pro Tem, they may even be in Palm Springs. Most of our units are not, as you and your constituents have heard, but we might need help finding a unit or two. And as I'm thinking, looking forward, and Greg and Tom and I are working with the healthcare district, I'd really like to put a couple of units near desert regional and have an opportunity for immediate respite care, folks coming out of that emergency room have an immediate and close-by opportunity to move into a good apartment. So we might need some help on that front.
Thank you. You'll come back to us, I'm sure.
I certainly will.
Perfect. Seeing no other questions or comments for Tom and Tom with Sebag, we thank you for your time and your presentation, and we have a staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. What I would like to do at this point is ask Police Chief Reyes to join us at the podium. He's going to give us an update on the discussion we had at the last meeting. Council had asked that we get some more information on the county programs from county staff. We actually had a meeting last Friday. Supervisor Perez was there, also Mr. Rodriguez, members of the county staff, police chief, and also council subcommittee, actually, Members Coors and Gardner were present as well. So I'd like the chief to give an update and what has occurred since then, and then I do believe the council members would want to weigh in as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As David mentioned, some names that were on that meeting, Zoom meeting, that was put together by staff in cooperation with the county. There was also several other county employees, Dr. Cameron Kaiser, as well as a lot of supervisors and managers of these various county programs that are placing clients throughout the county. You know, tremendous thanks to Greg Rodriguez and the county employees to put that together as quick as they did. You know, my report out is going to be fairly limited, given the fact that it's only been a week or so, and the information we received was put together in a matter of a couple of days. So there's still a lot of unanswered questions, and it's our hope that we get some answers to those questions in the coming weeks, as we continue to communicate with each other, with our staff and county staff. I think one of the biggest takeaways from that meeting is just, there was a clear, across-the-board understanding of the need for improvement in communication with the county, these programs, city staff, and of course, our police department has the most interactions with these types of clients in our city. And not only the improved communication, but consistency in that communication. One thing that we suggested was, prior to placement of clients in our city hotels, specifically as it relates to Project Room Key, to reach out to us in advance, to provide names so we could run them through our systems to see if they're in fact, they have ties to the city of Palm Springs, and how recent those ties are, or if they have the majority of their contacts in other cities, and then provide that feedback to the county so they can place that... And then provide that feedback to the county so they can place that client at the proper location. This past week, we did receive communication with Mr. Dillard, who is the primary manager of Project Room Key. He's provided at least three names. And we promptly provided feedback on the contacts we were able to locate in the system to him. And I believe those three clients are still in the process of being placed. So we did see some immediate improvement as far as the communication. One thing that we still are in need of knowing is the exits. You know, we learned through the county and the information that they provided that they've spent approximately $1.7 million specifically to hotels, for hotel stays of these clients. But yeah, we have yet to learn what the end result was after their stay. Where did they end up going? How many were relocated to other locations? Or just a general understanding of what the outcome was of those clients after their stay in our city. And it is our hope that we find out through Greg Rodriguez and county staff. Because, you know, clearly, the county has committed $1.7 million. And that's just in Palm Springs alone. It'd be good to know the outcome and the success of that effort.
Thank you so much, Chief, for your work on that. David, Dr. Ready, is there anything else that you wanted to add in terms of the staff report?
Well, I think that's all we have to report this evening. But I do think, as council had indicated, if a more formal presentation from the county might be helpful for the full council to hear in terms of your concerns of how do people get into the program, out of the program, the distribution throughout the city and how all the mechanics of that works. It might be helpful if the county staff could join us at our next meeting to have that discussion. If that is the council's direction, that way we might be able to zero in on, you know, because we're talking about the partnership of how we're working together, of what we can do together, dealing with these larger issues of what appears to be so many additional homeless on the streets of our city.
Thank you, Dr. Ready. And then I know we had council liaisons, Councilmember Garner and Councilmember Coors, who attended that meeting. I didn't, is there anything else you would like to add to the staff report or the discussion first?
Sure. You know, I'm glad we had the conversation. There's more conversation to be had on this and understanding really what's going on, what the real numbers are. I think there was some, still some confusion on the numbers. Some confusion on whether people who were leaving jail were for infectious disease or not and coming from, you know, the western part of the county and other cities in Coachella Valley to Palm Springs. So I think we raised those. I think we'll get, hopefully, I think, the idea of getting the key staff to a meeting and getting those numbers so we can really discuss those. I think the other thing we really shared that, you know, we need to, we really need to figure this out and figure out how we're going to, you know, get people off the street permanently. And, you know, how that's going to happen. So, but I think the chief pretty much summarized the meeting. The only thing I would add is I know the staff report has some other information on sort of what the city's done over the five years. It might be worth, maybe after this conversation on the county, the city manager can go through some of that. Because a lot of our residents don't know that we've housed hundreds of people since the time Roy's closed. And I think that would be really helpful information to share as part of this. And also just so we can have a conversation, what worked in those cases and what's not working. Because we all learn from what's been successful and how we can do more of the success and less of the things that aren't successful and creating issues. So just on the meeting, I have some other comments later, but just on the meeting.
Thank you. And I might request that if the county, key county staff can come back to the next council meeting and report about the numbers and do a presentation about the program, then we could also have city staff present about the city programs and the funding that we've done. So I do think it would be important to go over everything that the city has done on homelessness, which is included in the staff report. And then there are many things that are not included in the staff report, like the funding that we've given to organizations like the Well in the Desert, to staff a cooling and warming center, other funding that we've provided to organizations for rent relief, you know. But if overall, we could do those presentations at the same time at the next meeting. I know we have the Well in the Desert item on the meeting agenda. So a lot of people who are interested in homelessness will be attending and want to have a comprehensive conversation about everything that the city has done. Other council member comments? Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Either, any title works. So this came up because we had a report from our police chief last meeting that individuals were coming to Palm Springs that potentially had left jails. And there was a very clear impression that Palm Springs was receiving individuals, not just simply disproportionately, but overwhelmingly, different than other Coachella Valley cities and frankly, carrying a very large burden for the county as a whole. And in the last two weeks, I've heard a whole lot of different numbers. And frankly, at this point, the numbers don't add up. I've got one report here that says that there are 39 rooms and 49 clients that have stayed in Palm Springs hotels. Now, I don't know if that number's accurate, and I don't know what timeframe it's in. But my quick math of 1.7 million divided by 49 comes out to over $35,000. Now, I don't think we've paid that. But we, that's just the amount of money that's gone for Operation Room Key. I've not heard anything about the surrounding of services for the individuals that have been in the hotels of Operation Room Key or the kinds of follow-up that we've had after individuals have been placed there. The six hotels that have been identified to us is incomplete to programs that I know are existing. Does not include the Motel Six on East Palm Canyon, that I have personally seen individuals in overwhelming numbers. And two of our captain and our police lieutenant have had to make visits to that hotel management to impress upon them the level of problems that we have. What we heard about earlier this evening is something that is working and that is cooperation. And that is what Palm Springs wants to do. But for our merchants, for our residents, they are seeing over the last year a incredible increase in the number of individuals that they're encountering who are homeless and who are increasingly antagonistic and evidence of criminal behavior. Our police chief has reported on one of our, one of these hotels where there appears to be drug dealing on a regular basis. So I want to do everything we can to be helpful. But we are going to have to have a full and complete and accurate accounting of all the programs that have taken place and who's where. And how do we take and respond to this? Because right now, on our streets, there are clear issues. And I have seen those with my own eyes. And we don't help people by putting them in a situation where they have incredible opportunities to deal drugs with one another and not receive the kind of services that we want to be a part of. So I'm not here to pick on Greg in particular, because I know how much he's given of himself for this effort, or anyone else at the county. But as I said at the last meeting, our residents and our merchants are angry, and they have a right to be.
Thank you. Other council member comments or questions? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. And Greg, thank you for being here and listening to all this. You know, I echo Mayor Pro Tem's concerns. You know, we have a problem. The problem is, the reality is, when you look on the streets, we have a problem. But the numbers that we're getting shows that there's no problem. So there's a real disconnect between what the numbers we were provided from the county and what's really happening out there. And we need some reality to come into that so we can find a solution. And I'm solution-based, and I would really like to find a solution. So we need to know, we need to know the processes that a homeless person goes through or a convict goes through, one, and what those numbers look like, two, and what a solution is so that we don't congregate, such as drug dealing in one place together, or loitering, or whatever. So I'm, Greg, I really hope that the county accepts our invitation to come and speak to us and that we look mutually at solutions. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors.
Greg, as you take notes on what you're going to respond to, just want to, so I won't add to or repeat what's been said, but did want to share, we talked at the other meeting, but I did want to share a couple of things. So one is, you know, as I've been walking downtown and uptown in my district and speaking to businesses, emails we've gotten.
Aaron, are you picking up the audio? We're not hearing Councilmember Coors. Aaron, can you confirm whether we're on the air? Mayor, it looks like we have a technical problem.
Internet Wi-Fi and technology is a separate issue.
Okay, now you're back, councilman. We can hear you now, councilman, thank you. But Aaron, can you confirm that we're on the air?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay. So thank you, Mayor. We had a little technology issue, but we are back. So just Greg, as you know, you're thinking about responding to just two points. One is, as I've been walking, you know, the businesses in my district and talking to those businesses, which is primarily uptown and also part of downtown, and hearing from some residents who want to see us continue to be successful in addressing homelessness. The real concern has been, and particularly the last few months, even more so than earlier on, you know, they feel they know the chronic homeless. They're, you know, not as challenging for them as what they're seeing lately. More mental health issues, more aggressive criminal behavior, more drug addiction. So just your thoughts on that. I know we have Roy's is now a mental health room and board. So how are you utilizing that for people who are homeless with mental health issues? And the other issue, because so many of the hotels the county is housing people in, are near the wash, you know, near downtown, near Well in the Desert, how this is impacting Well in the Desert? And, you know, is there coordination in getting these people services? And how is that working? Because there's only so much space, obviously, at Well in the Desert. So would love to just get your feedback on that. I think Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton and Councilmember Wood's covered the other things I would have raised. So thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments? So, yeah, it's clear that the face of homelessness has changed in Palm Springs. We're seeing a different group of people, you know, younger people. It cut out again. Here we are.
You're back.
Are we live in the chambers? You can hear us?
Yes.
So we know that the county did a large volume and housed a lot of people with Project Room Key and other programs during this pandemic. And I know Greg has worked tirelessly every single day, personally helping people find housing. And thank you to Greg and the supervisor for all of your work on this. And I look forward to the next meeting, if you can attend and have county staff attend and really just have this conversation with our community about, you know.
All right, we're going to hold.
Uh, thank you to everyone for working with us through these technical difficulties. I was making my comment, um, but in the interest of time, I'm wondering if the city council, I know it's 10:15, we still have a number of items on the agenda and we also have public comments. So I'm wondering if the best path forward here in terms of, um, really addressing these issues and not when it's too late, um, where people aren't paying attention and we can't discuss them thoroughly, if, um, Greg, if you don't mind coming back and having, um, county staff coming to come to the next meeting and we can really address these concerns and we could, I know we've given you a list of items, you know, we could give you a list of items in writing that we could address together. Um, and then we'll can also do a presentation, um, from the city and from the county about the programs that we're doing.
I, I'm fine with that. My only concern is there's been a lot of comments tonight that are not necessarily factual, um, that I, I believe the, I would just hope the public would be patient. I'm happy, more than happy to come back and do that to the extent, but, um, there, there's a lot of information that I could clarify. There's a lot of data I could give you right now. Um, uh, and I, again, I, I understand time constraints, but I, I would just, um, implore the council and the public to have patience and, and not take any comments away from what has been said to be, um, I don't want to use the word untrue because it's not untrue, but, uh, to be taken out of context is the word.
To the council, um, where do you want to go in terms of this discussion and what can happen now and what can happen next week, next, in two weeks?
I, I support that idea. I think we've sort of shared, you know, our concerns, if there are any others. So I think it gives Greg and the county time to get us the data where there may be disconnect from what we're seeing and, um, what, what it is and that kind of information so we can have a more thorough conversation. I just ask that, you know, we move this at the top of the agenda, you know, we should do it off the bat, maybe even before public hearings since we'll have a bunch of county staff and I think the public's very interested in this issue. So, and we're all, so we're all fresh.
Can, can, I, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. If I can add too, is like by the 25th, we're going to have some better idea too of what federal stimulus is, what some other state dollars will be too, that we can provide a much more comprehensive report on how more importantly, how we move forward together.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Greg. I think that's really important and I'd love our conversation in two weeks to also include solutions, joint solutions that we can bring forward. So maybe proposals the county could bring or ideas that we could move forward. I know we've worked really hard for years together on, um, uh, navigating perfect housing in Palm Springs, that we worked on the Ivy Palm project and the bankruptcy court wouldn't fault to the county, but, you know, what are those ideas, um, that we can actually, you know, get action here? Cause our community wants to take care of the people who are homeless on our streets. Um, and we, you know, obviously it's humanitarian crisis for our homeless residents. And so we need act, quick action and less talk. So, um, that was, I would love it if our conversation, um, could be a report about what's been done and what will go forward and also some policy solutions together. So thank you. We appreciate your time and appreciate you, um, being here tonight. Are there any final comments before we move on from this item? Thank you. Thank you, Greg, for joining us. The next item is item five C, update on the Palm Springs COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Program.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, are we going to go over to public?
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. We are going to do public comment. I'm sorry we're getting to it a bit later than we aim for here. Give me a minute. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it cannot generally take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. The city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, if you could please begin.
Lauren Wolfher, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Um, I'm speaking in support and solidarity with the Asian community, um, who's experienced a disturbing increase in anti-AIDS attacks to the beginning of the pandemic. Um, Asian people have been scapegoated and blamed for the pandemic and this rhetoric has led directly to targeted harassment and acts of violence. We as a community, um, must stand up and condemn this racism as strongly as possible. There are elderly folks who are afraid of walking in their own neighborhoods, um, out of fear of harassment and violence, which is just completely wrong, um, and unacceptable. It's my understanding, um, that Binahan Desert, um, Apollo IE and Aisling Desert Chapter are requesting the council draft a resolution to raise awareness of this issue, um, and condemn these racist attacks. I am calling to support this effort and I hope the council takes action to quickly stand in solidarity with our Asian neighbors and, um, declare that we absolutely will not tolerate bigotry in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll disconnect. Bob Garner, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay. Um, my comment is as a retired American history teacher and teacher of the Constitution, that we have not been the constitutional republic since January 16th, 1893, when the Navy and the Marines overthrew Okalani in Hawaii and stole the nation of Hawaii and destroyed our republic. So 128 years of a de facto, in fact, worldwide military empire, which is not America. And under this de facto worldwide military empire, none of the elected officials are legal. They're only legal under the republic. So we need to become the republic again, and that's why I'd like the city council to pass a resolution that the Palm Springs City Council supports the repatriation of all American armed forces back onto mainland soil, last two from Hawaii by July 4th, my mother's birthday. And when the last two land in California from Hawaii, we will be a republic again at that moment because all American military armed forces will be back on Texas and California soil. We will not have any armed forces anywhere else in the world. Hawaii will get its sovereignty back as a nation and we will get our republic back as the real American republic. So I want the city council to join with me in, uh, putting that resolution forward so that somehow the, uh, so-called leadership country can realize that this is not America until we have a republic back, until all the American armed forces are back onto American mainland soil and we're out of the business of being the biggest de facto military illegal empire in the history of the planet Earth. And I can finish by just saying, Vive Kennedy. My friend President Kennedy, he was bringing the troops back from Vietnam, was murdered in Dallas, Lyndon Johnson.
Senator Garner, your time has concluded.
Okay. So I've concluded. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Naomi Soto, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name's Naomi Soto. Uh, I just have a quick comment, um, in support of my Asian-American neighbors here in the city, um, and related in all communities. So while it seems as if the end of the pandemic seems to almost be in sight as more and more people are vaccinated, um, the reality is, uh, this is also coupled with a rise in violence and discrimination of Asian-Americans, um, you know, hopefully being blamed for the virus itself. And I just really implore the council to, um, consider a move forward with the resolution in support of our Asian-American residents here in Palm Springs and that we really make clear that this city is a place that doesn't tolerate hate and unkind in any form, um, and really makes, makes it clear that we have been so strong in, in surviving this pandemic together and that we, we do that with all of our community members, um, and just make that as, as clear as possible. So, um, thank you again, and, uh, I appreciate you guys' late nights, uh, on all of these issues that I've been talking about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, um, I have, uh, that does conclude public comment. I've tried reaching David Weiner via text and, uh, phone call, but no answer. Given the late hour, um, I don't want to keep repeatedly calling him.
Good idea. Thank you. The next item is item five C, update on the Palm Springs COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Program. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you. Mayor, mayor, members of council, Jay Verada, our Community and Economic Development Director, it has an update. And in the staff report on page 35, you've seen the, uh, the, the list of the initial group of, of grants that we're ready to move forward with. Uh, that being said, uh, we did want to bring them back to city council, uh, just because when we put the program together, there, there were some areas where there wasn't clear definition on the criteria. Uh, so we did work through the applications and I do believe we have how many now, Jay? 130 something? 141 applications. Uh, so what we wanted to do is present this to you this evening. If there's any clarification on the program criteria, uh, it would be important for us to get that feedback.
$1 million, uh, and allocating a flat $10,000 forgivable loan. The criteria there included, well, the, the terms would be that it would be a zero per interest loan, uh, loan term, uh, for six months. The loan is forgiven if the business is in good standing and remains in good standing. Uh, and it's open for 30 days within receipt of funds and that factors into eligibility. And the loan is reduced and discounted each month. So, uh, some of the priorities, uh, we were provided with were the smaller businesses, the, uh, zero to five, uh, business, uh, employee type of businesses, those in the industries that had been shut down for the longest periods of time and that tended to be personal care. And also those that, um, did, well, in that case, um, those that, uh, were not eligible for or did not receive, uh, any other type of a grant such as a forgivable PPP, uh, loan or a county grant that was provided. And that, that applies, that concept of not being eligible for those, uh, applied to those that were, uh, over the five, uh, employees. Those below five may have received some, uh, additional financial assistance through other sources, but those, uh, because they were a smaller number of employees and because they were shut down for a longer period of time, uh, were, uh, given a little more leeway so as to not have, so that, that they did receive additional financing was not held against them. So, um, that's, that's how we arrived at this initial list. Uh, we have been working with all these businesses to complete their applications and, uh, document to a certain extent their, uh, payroll, their profit and loss, their current standings on their balance sheet, their business license, uh, uh, the, the liaisons helped us flag some of those who had been, uh, fined for non-compliance and so those came off the list. So that's how we got to this group and, um, we actually, uh, are, are prepared to bring more forward, uh, if, if, um, you know, we, we get clear direction on, on this set of businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, cord.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, so a couple of just comments, one, um, so it's clear for council, so, um, for the liaisons, uh, Mayor Halsus and I, we didn't pick and choose among businesses. There were a number recommended by staff. Um, all we did was point out the ones that didn't meet the criteria that we had set for either having COVID violations, um, needed more information on what their number of employees actually was versus independent contractors, um, and one that was a chain, um, with more than five locations. So we didn't pick and choose, we just, um, based it on staff's recommendation and asked that it come forward to council. So I just want to be clear on that. And one of the issues, uh, I wanted to raise is we said, you know, we wanted to help primarily people who either were ineligible, uh, for federal or state grants, um, or the smaller business is if they got the federal PPP, they have so, so little payroll, they're not getting very much and people are using PPP for rent, utilities and other things. Um, we didn't want those to fall through the cracks with no funding. Uh, one issue that came up is we said if they're in operation, uh, by May, um, and one of the issues that came up on my business walks were, uh, people that opened after May but were paying their rent and leases in February but weren't allowed to open. Um, so it'd be great to get direction if they should be eligible, uh, given they were clearly paying rent and they would have been open absent, um, the closure by the state. So I just wanted to throw that out, uh, so just want to share that with council. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Prothea Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a question. Uh, I want to be certain, we say no repeated violations, uh, so we're allowing someone who might have had an inadvertent violation. Is that correct?
The, the issue, uh, that we, we've come across is someone, a, a business who potentially or who actually did receive a violation, uh, and now that violation they would have received after, uh, one or more warnings. Uh, so that is, was the area that we would like some direction on, uh, potentially of those if, if in fact we would, they would be eligible or not.
So we've got situations where someone would have received, uh, multiple warnings and then received a violation, did that, uh, and we're, we're considering them eligible?
No, we have not put them on this list because that is one of the areas we were, uh, looking for direction.
I, and I can only speak for myself, but that's not what I intended. Uh, and I, I'm fully recognize that there may be individuals who made a inadvertent error, they were warned and then they, uh, they corrected it. Uh, but, uh, if someone received multiple warnings and then got a violation, I do not believe they should be eligible. And, uh, if someone received a citation, uh, and had to pay a fine, uh, then they absolutely should not be eligible.
We heard that feedback from the council and so that's why we as the liaison gave that, um, feedback to city staff. So if that's the will of the whole council, then we'll continue that policy for funding these. Does that work for everyone or are there comments on that issue? Thanks. Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, you know, um, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm having a problem with it. I'm having just an outright problem with it. I think that we should have a grading system and there should be points and people get points because we're not going to have enough money for the number of people that have applied for these grants. Another option that I might think about is that we, you know, you know, what the county did is if you, if your gross revenue was a thousand to 100,000, you got a $5,000 grant. And if you're a hundred thousand to a million dollars, you got a 10,000 or $15,000 grant and maybe you want to make that 10. I just really think that just a 10 across the board without some indication of what the business is, that we might want to break it into increments of five and 10 based on like what the county did. Um, I also, um, I also have concerns that we have two council members making decisions who have businesses in their district. I don't think that the council members should be involved at all. I think it should be absolutely just grading them. Um, and staff can do that. I don't think council members need to be involved in that.
And just to be clear, as a point of clarification and personal privilege, the council members, we did not talk about individual businesses and we gave the same feedback. This is a council discussion, um, but it was about policy questions that we are now bringing to the city council. So policy questions like the number of employees, if it's, you know, full-time, um, the issue that we just talked about, about violations, you know, a number of those kind of policy questions as we're trying to bring something to council and this, that's why this is a new business item, um, and what hasn't been approved. Um, so just to be clear, because I agree with you, this is not a political decision and we have no role in it. It really is, um, you know, for staff to decide the issues about ranking and the amounts, the five to 10, um, that this council gave directions just to do the $10,000 amount, unlike what some other cities have done, just in administrative, um, ease of administration because we heard from staff that it, um, the more complicated of a program that we make, it's one more difficult to administer for staff and we just have, lack staff's time and capacity because we're overworked and to, um, it's more complicated for businesses and they don't know what they're going to get and it might not be worth it and it just seemed overly complicated and then that's what my memory is that this whole council decided. Um, so that's what we've been announcing is the amount, so I think it would be really difficult to change the amount now, but I'm with you on, you know, if there's a better way, because we did not announce a deadline, this has been a rolling application process and I do fear that, um, you know, these are the 30 that are, seemed really clearly based on the council's direction to qualify, but there are that larger list and then I think we'll get a lot more. So really open to your ideas, um, about how to best, you know, do that in a fair way.
And I think, thank you for that. I think, I think that coming up with a rating sheet that's weighted, you know, maybe you get, if you were closed, longer you got, you know, to the points. You know, just like when you put somebody through an interview or anything, that my suggestion is just to come up with a fair rating sheet that can't be challenged and is transparent, I guess, is what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Garner.
Uh, and, I mean, right now it's, I'm sorry if I, maybe I missed this number, but we have a little over 100 applicants and we have enough money for 100 businesses, right? So, I, I mean, I'm happy with if we want to set a date for when the applications need to be finished and then see how many there are and maybe we fund them all. I mean, if you're looking at 27 businesses, that's $270,000 and we can do that. So, I mean, I, I think if we just put a deadline to wrap this up and see if we can, uh, fill the gap, let's do it. I mean, and then we can go from there. If, if somebody didn't get in, in time for the deadline, that we can discuss after we we do deal with the, the people who did. Um, but I, I do think that depending on how many businesses we have, it's possible we could fund this.
Thank you. And some of the feedback from this council and giving direction and then also the business task force, um, was that these are urgent and so the thought and city staff wasn't sure and that's what we're also bringing is should we fund these 30 now, which are clearly fall under council's direction or, you know, because it's urgent and businesses need that money now, or is it that, you know, we do that, what you just proposed of hold it open for a certain amount of time, um, and wait and, and not put that money out into the community?
I guess, no, for me, I, I think we should move forward with the 30 that are on the list and with others, but just that, uh, also add a date. So I feel like we should start moving forward, but, but add a date so that we can get our head around what exactly the need is. Because it's, I, it's been open for about a month now, right? So I think if we start to say, okay, you know, you have a couple more weeks, that's, I, I'm guessing reasonable, but I mean, I defer to the two of you who have been talking to the businesses.
Council member, cord.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, what we didn't want was first come, first served, right? We wanted it based on need and, uh, sort of Dennis's point, but I, I think we've done a lot of publicity. Most businesses I spoke to, uh, knew about it, some didn't, um, and many had applied. Um, so I think saying, you know, the end of the month, um, you know, that gives people two months to have applied and then we do get to see the universe, uh, may make the most sense. But I want to ask Jay, of those who applied, um, you had shared at our, when we discussed it, how many were actually in the categories of businesses that can participate in this program? Right? We picked five categories. I think a whole lot of them weren't, right? Wasn't it like 70 or 75? That might have changed since then.
Thank you. Yes, councilman, there are, uh, still a few in categories that, um, probably wouldn't be deemed priority, uh, so, um, I don't have a number, but I, maybe 25%?
Right. So we may not be quite at 100 of those five categories of businesses that were closed that we approved when we passed this, so.
So for city staff, hearing the council discussion, is there a proposal that you have about the best way to move forward in administering this?
Well, first, if we, why don't we just review what we believe the current criteria is and then we, some clear direction beyond that would be, would be helpful. Okay?
These would be, uh, businesses and industries, again, that have been shut down or, uh, impacted by COVID rules, uh, such as retail, personal care, restaurant, um, bars, uh, and so those are the ones that
Fitness.
Have, have been
Fitness.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Fitness.
Fitness, thank you. Thank you, councilman. Uh, and, um, in, in addition to that, uh, we had two groups, those with, uh, one to five employees and those with five or, five to 25 employees. So those, uh, have basically, um, been the groups we're working with and in terms of grading, the focus has been on those with, uh, one to five employees. There are some
So, so the one to five employees have been giving, given preference?
Yes. First review, I would say.
First review.
Yes. And, uh, so beyond that, um, we, we also check for those who have, uh, they let us know on the application if they have received other financial assistance, uh, if it's been forgiven in any capacity and so those also factor in, but for those that are one to five employees, uh, it's kind of like that criteria is waived, so.
Jay, the other issue is if the business is closed, because, so in essence, uh, a business could be closed, they get the $10,000 and they don't reopen. Wasn't that one of their criteria as well, that they would have to be reopened within a certain
They would have to reopen within 30 days. And, and be able to remain open for six months.
Now, now the one thing about that is it goes to the, the city's policy interests if it is keeping stores open around the city and not becoming vacant, you know, obviously that, that's, um, a bit of a contradictory for the independent contractor who doesn't have a, a store and paying rent. Um, so, so that is an area where we could use some clarification of what the council's preference is.
Okay, so first, the industries that were said out loud, is that correct to the council in terms of the industries that we gave direction to prioritize, to, to have be eligible for this program, right? So I think that was clear direction that was already given, so just to confirm it though, I see heads shaking up and down yet. So then if that could lead us through, what are the areas exactly that you need direction for? Just can you do it issue by issue so it's clear that was, at least for me, hard to follow?
Sure. So, so for example, under that criteria, the, everyone on this list on page 35, uh, would, would, would meet that criteria. They also would meet the criteria of, of employees, one to five, at least, of, of, all of them on this list have five or under. Uh, so the, the only que- question is if we're giving preference to, to those that have in essence, a, a building, uh, that they're either leasing or own, a brick and mortar, so to speak, or a independent contractor who say, for example, works from home, if there's any direction on that.
Council member, cord.
Good, thanks. Um, so I'll give you, one question is, Jay, so do you get like their last two payrolls to figure out employees? How does that work? Do you have a restaurant? Aren't restaurants have five or less, but there could be some very small ones that could? So I'm just curious.
Right. Uh, we get what they've, in some cases it is actual, uh, payroll records, other cases it is, uh, in their, um, profit and loss statements showing, uh,
Um, so one question is, Jay, so do you get like their last two payrolls to figure out employees? How does that work? Do you have a restaurant? A restaurant have five or less, but there could be some very small ones that could. So I'm just curious.
Right. Uh, we get what they've, in some cases, it is actual payroll records, other cases, it is, uh, in their, um, profit and loss statements showing, uh, what they've, uh, spent on employees, uh, along with, uh, I think it's called a Form 941, which reports, um, uh, information on, on, uh, employees that were paid.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I do think, given we're going to have more applications than we can fill and one of the reasons of focusing on those who aren't getting any or much PPP is because, you know, they have rent, they have utilities. Um, so for me, I think the first preference is people who are in brick and mortars. Um, and, uh, you know, really, which were shut down more than, you know, there are some people who work from home who are still able to cater and change to delivering meals, right? I know folks who have done that. So, um, I think brick and mortars are also more of a city concern because of the vacant buildings, but I do think there's just been more hardship there, um, if we have to pick. And the other issue just, uh, which I raised earlier is if a business was signed to lease and was paying rent by May 1st, is that it? Or do they have to have been open even when they weren't able to be legally? So I think it's unclear what that May date means. So I've got to ask that by businesses who were paying rent, but then could never open until the first orders went away in May or June. So any feedback on that?
It would seem that if they were, you know, they were eligible to be open and they had an intent to be open, but for COVID, and then post-COVID, they will be open or at some reasonable time, I think that, that would make them eligible.
Okay. So we should make that clearer in the process. Because someone said they applied, they called and they were told they didn't apply even though they were paying rent in February. So we should just clarify that. I can reach out to that one specific business to let them know. Thank you.
I think the key criterion is if it's going to remain open. That would be, be the key, the key indicator.
Yes.
I think all these are open now.
Yeah.
Are there other issues that city staff need direction on?
Well, I think just, just to clarify, so it, or are we going to score and weight these? Um, I, I guess if they meet the criteria, if they meet the criteria, everyone is going to, to be receiving a grant until the money is gone. So then the only question is if we have more than, meet the criteria than we have, do we bring, come back to council and indicate what the gap is and if you want to add more? Uh, or we just have a cutoff date? So obviously that gives us, puts us in the position of picking winners and losers, but there is obviously boundaries to what, to what we can provide.
Great. So does the council want to pick, approve these 30 that are on the attachment now? Or do you want to wait until there's a criteria set and we, we score all applications?
And, and is, is, to, to add, add to that, Mayor, maybe if we would approve these 30, but in, and then council would have to approve every other group, the next group, so we would have you review them? So that would be the, the rolling, uh, or we stop it, hold it and then do a grading system and then come back to you? So I think that's what you're saying were the two options.
Thank you. Rolling model or stop and hold? Thank you, Dr. Eddy. Councilmember Coors votes for rolling and I think Councilmember Woods votes for stop and hold them and rank them. Mayor Protem Middleton.
Uh, I think we should, uh, proceed, uh, and so I guess that's rolling. I'm just reluctant to start trying to redefine, uh, scoring system at this point, uh, although I, Councilmember Woods' comments are, are very well taken. I just think we're past it.
And Councilmember Garner had previously said rolling, I think you had said approve these now, but also set a deadline, which I support too. So if that, that sounds like the compromise here between all of us. So city staff, is there a good deadline that we should pick? Councilmember Coors suggests at the end of this month. Is that the right deadline for this program?
Sure. I mean, that, that, that would be sufficient. We will have certainly plenty of applications by then. That would, I would think qualify. So just to be clear then, uh, then we would, then agendize on the subsequent agendas each next round that we believe are qualified and ready to go for ultimately council's approval.
And then Councilmember Woods' point, you'll bring those straight to council and not to the liaison, which I think is fine?
Correct.
Great. Anything else you need on this side? Then Councilmember Woods?
I just wanted to say, I think that, um, what I left, when we first approved this, we didn't, and where we're at now, is I just think we need to set a goal. If that goal is to try and make sure that storefronts are not shuttered, I think we really as a council need to say that, because I left the first meeting not really believing that was the goal. Um, I would agree with that goal. I just want to reinforce it and that we all agree to it.
Yes.
That, that's very helpful. Thank you. That's very helpful.
And then one other question, um, Mayor Holstich and I had for staff, um, on some, on applications was for a business that normally uses employees and not independent contractors, right? Here salons contract out, um, you know, chairs, that's their normal process. But for business, um, like a hotel that would normally have employees, but is doing it all through independent contractors, um, I think our view is that that is probably we want a council direction. That probably counts as more than as employees, um, as opposed to a hotel that has one employee and everyone else is a contractor. Wouldn't qualify as five or under for the PPP waiver, but I just wanted to make sure we get council direction on that, because I thought staff needed that as well.
Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, um, I, I think there's legal questions if you're not, if you're telling your hotel workers independent contractors, so that raises a lot of red flags for me just to, whether or not they're actually following the law. It sounds like they have a lawsuit on their hands. So no, I would not want to follow, want to do that.
So the businesses that normally operate that way, like a salon? Yes, but not ones that normally actually have folks that are employees?
Right.
A little direction for folks? Okay.
Councilmember Woods?
It does bring up the question of how we're handling, I, is, when a salon has several chairs, do each of those, um, people who, who rent a chair need a business license?
Yes.
They definitely have a permitology license.
So are we, are we then only giving it to the person who owns the brick and mortar? Or are we giving it to each of the, the people who rent chairs as well?
Yes, so it would be the, the actual business in theory that they're the ones paying the rent for the brick and mortar store shop and would have the extra expenses.
Thank you.
I do think council, what we discussed, council policy interest was, um, maintaining those businesses in our storefronts. And so, you know, guiding, having that be the guiding principle. And the number of employees was relevant to us because of the amount of PPP and other loans that they could have accessed, right? Um, so that was, I think, the overarching policy. Other items, Dr. Eddy, that you need from us in terms of
No, I think we have enough direction at this point. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Any other coun- council member comments? This is just a receive and file or would you like a, a vote on anything in here?
Uh, I think we have direction. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item 5D. This is a joint item between the city council and the financing authority to authorize the issuance of lease revenue refunding bond, 2021, Series A for the downtown revitalization project and execution of related documents. If we can have a staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. We did have a presentation on this from Ms. Harrell. Our financial advisor outlined the benefits of this. Uh, we wanted to, to make sure that everyone was reminded of what this was. So I think we're ready to vote unless council has some additional questions.
Thank you. Other questions or comments or motions from council? Councilmember Coors?
Moved and thank you, everyone, for your work to save money. It's a good thing.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coors? Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is city council and city manager requests and upcoming agenda development. Are there requests from council members? Or staff? Councilmember Garner?
Oh. Go ahead. No, I, I did hear the, um, comments from, um, by Anyhan Desert and others regarding the, um, statement and so I'm happy to work with, um, those groups to, to bring that forward for us next time. I think that's probably something very fairly straightforward we can do. And then just, I want to reiterate, uh, the Palm Springs High School, um, issue if we could, it's, I'm seeing a lot of nods, so we can bring that back, David. Um, and I think it can be on the consent, such as that we can all see the numbers and make sure we're okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you. For staff, I believe there's already a proposed resolution from those groups on the, um, you know, Ameri- Asian American community facing violence, increasing violence, um, during this time. So I think that there might be one ready to go that advocates have already worked on. Um, I'd like to see that come forward too. I see Mayor, I saw Mayor Protem Middleton and then Councilmember Coors.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, just, uh, as we approach the next meeting, we deferred, uh, in one item on the well and we also deferred the much larger conversation with county on homelessness issues. Both of those are going to be, uh, potentially very lengthy, uh, discussions. Uh, we also have, uh, a saying goodbye to, uh, our city manager in what will be his last meeting. So I, I think we need to be very careful with, uh, the balance of the agenda at the next meeting, that we do not, uh, uh, put ourselves in a position that we're, we're here till, uh, past midnight.
Well, if I
And yeah. Uh, and then the last thing, again, I'd like to get a request that we adjourn in honor of Tommy Edwards and Jim Cunningham.
And Ma- Mayor, if I, if I could, on other items for the agenda, and, um, thank you, Mayor Protem Middleton, uh, saying goodbye to city managers is about a 30-second proposition. So I think we'll be okay. I, I do, do would like to note, so we, we are going to have the well in the desert review of the CUP, uh, along with the continued homelessness discussion with county staff. So those two are there. But, but also the other item, the, the planning entitlement process, streamlining permitting, uh, that's going to be a public hearing. That's been matriculating through planning and planning commission for some time, so that is ready to go. A couple other items. The HRC Human Rights Commission did emerge the Section 14 apology, uh, and, and that was requested to come to the next meeting along with, we also have the, the commercial eviction moratorium. So that, that will be the items that are on the agenda unless there's some, some direction otherwise. I, I would note there's three things we will move and that is the wastewater treatment plant capital projects, uh, discussion of, of SB 81383 on organic management and plastic styrofoam. So we would move those to a following meeting. So again, just to reiterate, we will have the, uh, well in the desert homelessness discussion, entitlement process, section 14 apology and commercial eviction moratorium, unless you believe that's too much from one meeting. So any direction there would be helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors?
Great, uh, thank you. So some of the things I was going to, that's going to be said, and just to share on the, uh, resolution that was discussed, the Human Rights Commission did discuss and I think discussed this at the last meeting as well. So I think they've already weighed in, um, on that. So I think that's right. As far as, you know, section 14, I think that may be better to go to a meeting that doesn't have as many issues, so, and people have more advanced notice to come and speak about it. And we can do more outreach to those who, especially those who are impacted by it. And we don't want that to get lost in the two big items that are coming, is just my thought, if council's amenable to that. And we've put it on the first meeting in April instead.
Have we worked with the tribe on the section 14 apology?
Uh, no, they asked to, we've got through, so I was going to send it over to them.
I think that more time for outreach and that work would be helpful. Other requests for agenda development? Dr. Eddy, did you get what you needed?
Yeah, yes, thank you, uh, Council. I think we have some clear direction. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So the next regular city council meeting will be held on March 25th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And Mayor Protem Middleton, if you don't mind, um, adjourning for us, um, per your request for our community members.
Thank you. Uh, we adjourned the meeting in honor of Tommy Edwards of Sunline and Jim Cunningham of Palm Springs Municipal Services and thank them and their family for their contributions to our community.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.